I'd like to make a motion to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, before we proceed tonight, I want to make a motion to remove item number 16 from the agenda. All the -- you still need to dot some i's and cross some t's.
So, a motion to remove item 16 from the agenda?
Second.
A motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor of removing it? Unanimous. Counselor Miller.
Mr. Chairman, yes, I'd like to make a motion to replace item 16 to discuss the process to increase the school board seats from five to seven. And, yeah, that's it. Item 16.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. All right. Item three, rules of order. We follow Robert's rules of order and any other rules that are adopted at the annual organizational meeting. Item four, adoption of minutes from the following meetings of the Ellsworth City Council, 7/19/2021, regular monthly meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Item five, city manager's report. Manager Moser.
Thank you, counsel. Good evening. Tonight, we have -- I have a couple of announcements. First off, the local roads committee will be meeting on Tuesday, August 31st, right here at City Hall at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. And the request is that any members of the public who want to attend that meeting, you're certainly welcome. We ask that you come with ideas for maybe your priorities of what you see as needs for our local roads. We discourage this from turning into a complaint session for the work that's been done in the past. So hopefully folks will come with fresh perspective and provide some insight into some area roads that may need to be addressed. Counsel will be in attendance as well as city staff. So again, that's August 31st at 6:00 PM. The city broadband committee is developing a survey of city residents in order to better understand the broadband needs within the city. Stay tuned for information in the email, in the mail electronically, and on the city website and Facebook page. One of the potential resources to use for our ARPA funds, there's been a lot of talk about broadband, both at the county level as well as at the city level. So that's one of the things that we're looking into for possible expenditure with that funding. September 2nd at 6:00 PM right here at City Hall, we'll be having a marijuana adult use council workshop. Representatives from the main office of marijuana policy will be here to, or actually, I think electronically, to present information and update the council on the current status of the laws and what some of the most recent updates are dealing with adult use marijuana. Also, just to notify to the public, the folks who may be coming here to do business at City Hall, on August 27th, which is a Friday, the City Hall will be closing at 12 o'clock so that the staff can enjoy an afternoon employee appreciation barbecue over at Harbor Park. We encourage all of the councilors to attend if available. And finally, hazardous household waste collection day is set for Saturday, August 28th. The location will be at the Ellsworth High School. Permits are available at City Hall. And finally, and most importantly, we are still lacking one volunteer. We need a volunteer for a four-hour block at the event. And they're simply there for, to direct folks and to check with the certificates to make sure that they've either, they're resident of Ellsworth or other towns will have other volunteers there, and you won't be actually having to handle the materials. And it runs from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So anyone interested in volunteering for that four-hour block, please reach out to the city here at City Hall, and we'll get your name down on the list and get you the information that you need to have for that day. That is all I have, sir.
Any questions? Seeing none. Item six, committee reports. Any counselors attend any committees? Counsel Lyons.
I attended the harbor meeting. They have a few ways they're thinking about maybe getting some more parking space, and they're still working on preliminarily, but at a later date would like to bring it to the council.
Other committees?
Mr. Chairman, not so much a committee, more or less an update. Earlier this year, the council approved an expenditure for the second year preservation of the old burying ground cemetery located behind the congregational church behind us. And that was done last Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. And just want to let people know that of the stones back there, we were able to rescue eight of them, eight broken ones, out of the mud where they had laid for several years. And we have since cleaned them and professionally repaired them. They're now standing loud and proud and meeting the sun every morning. Several stones that were leaning were corrected. Those also are now standing straight and, as the phrase goes, meeting the sun. We have a long ways to go. Next year, we'll be attacking towards the back of the cemetery. There are still 50 to 60 stones on the ground where they don't belong. These are the stones of Ellsworth founders, Ellsworth veterans, and the earliest citizens of the city. And I hope that the council next year appropriates the same amount of money and will get the same preservationists back here along with the same large number of volunteers that come. And that all of those volunteers are at no charge. The only fee is for the preservationist. It's probably the best bargain that we get out of anything that we buy in the city. So, thank you very much.
Any other committees? Counsel Grindel.
I attended the broadband committee, and city manager Moser kind of stole my thunder. So we received a $5,000 Connect Maine grant, basically going to help us do a survey with data collection. And the survey, which should, we should see a draft of the survey next week. It includes speed tests citywide, and it's really important for residents to fill this out so we know who is underserved, who is unserved, and who is overpriced, and so that we can formulate a plan to get broadband to all of our residents. So please be on the lookout for that survey.
And then, although the Recreation Commission is struggling to find a time to meet, there's still, hopefully in a few minutes, we'll be adding a member, but there's still availability. If you are interested in participating in that committee, please contact the city. They definitely could use some additional members. All right. We will move on to item seven, citizens' comments. This is a portion of the agenda that is open to the community to make comments on any matter you wish. If it's on the agenda tonight, you'll have a chance during the agenda item to speak. So please hold off until those items come up. Otherwise, you're welcome to go to the podium and have a chance to speak. And seeing no takers? All right. We will move on to item eight, presentation of awards. First presentation is for Chad Wilmot.
He's not here. He's currently working.
So Chad's being recognized for 20 years of service with the Ellsworth Police Department. He's working. You made him work.
Slave driving down.
Chad, because you're working. So in recognition of your 20 years of service to the Ellsworth Police Department in your various capacities from police officer to sergeant, your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community of contributing to improvement of the city of Ellsworth. So we will make sure Chad gets that. But 20 years of service on the police force is a remarkable achievement, accomplishment. Extend our appreciation to him.
I will.
Next is for, I'll make sure it's the right one, for John Whedon.
So John, you're being recognized for 15 years of service as watershed steward for the Ellsworth Water Department. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community and contributing to the improvement of the city of Ellsworth presented this 16th day of August, 2021.
Thank you.
Josh is not here either.
Josh is not?
No.
Is he working too?
He's sleeping.
He works.
All right. So this is to recognize Joshua Stewart in recognition of your five years of service as a police officer for the city of Ellsworth Police Department. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the city of Ellsworth. Congratulations to Josh. Thank you.
And then to Kale Roberts.
So Kale Roberts, in recognition of your five years of service to the city of Ellsworth in your various capacities from transfer station attendant to tax clerk to assistant to the assessor. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the city of Ellsworth presented this 16th day of August, 2021. Thank you.
And we have one additional recognition. I'm going to turn it over to Counsel Blanchett.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a plaque to read, but what I do have is the knowledge that I gained shortly after I became a city councilor eight years ago, that the people that work within the city, not only are they employees, but in some sense, they also become family, families to each other. They know about everybody's children, everybody's spouse, everybody's, whatever is going on in their family. And sometimes it's great fun to hear about things like that. So having said that, if you'll excuse me for just a minute, let me grab something.
Just a pause. We'll just wait.
Heidi, will you come up, please? We learned earlier today that today is Heidi's 25th anniversary, and we teased the police chief about officers having to work, but we really want to tease Heidi about her having to work tonight. But 25 years of marriage is a great feat. It's really hard to beat, and we would be remiss without giving you flowers and saying congratulations.
Thank you.
So I would just note that Heidi pulls together the agenda, and nowhere on here does it have her name for the recognition, so we had to sleuth that out a bit. Nice try. Nice try. All right. Consent agenda. Consent agenda, all items within the district are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item nine, council order number 082100, request of the tax collector deputy treasurer to initiate civil actions in the name of the city of Ellsworth for the purpose of collecting delinquent personal property taxes. Item 10, council order number 082101, request of the Recreation Commission to accept a resignation letter from Nicholas Turner with a term to expire on June 30th, 2022. Item 11, council order number 082102, request of the Recreation Commission to appoint Kimberly Fitch as a member of the commission with a term to expire on June 30th, 2023. Would any counselors like to remove an item? Seeing none. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move as presented.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. And I did fail to acknowledge at the beginning of the meeting that all counselors are present this evening. New business. Item 12, public hearings in action on the application for the following licenses. First, Madam Clerk, all applications in order. First one is Marges Mex Ellsworth LLC DBA Margaritas Ellsworth, 191 Main Street for renewal of a city class B license, amusement liquor, vichyler, and renewal of a state class A restaurant lounge malt liquor, wine, spirits, class 11 liquor license. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. If you would like to speak. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the request of margaritas for renewal of their license.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Acadia Area Restaurant Group Holdings Holding Incorporated DBA Pat's Pizza, Ellsworth, 396 High Street for renewal of a city class C license, vichyler, and liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant malt liquor, wine, spirits, class 1, 2, 3, 4 liquor license. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anybody wish to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Move as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Maine Organic Therapy DBA Cure Leaf Maine 3 Myrick Street, Suite B for renewal of a medical marijuana dispensary license, including a city vichyler license. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move approval over the request of Maine Organic Therapy for renewal of their license.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Counsel Kaplan.
Looking over all of their paperwork, I would have hoped to see that they have some sort of a warning label for the adult use of marijuana. I have patients that are pregnant and have medical marijuana cards for their nausea despite the fact that marijuana use in pregnancy has been shown to increase the incidence of autism, increase the incidence of low birth weight, small head size, et cetera, not to mention the cognitive dysfunction in breastfeeding mothers. And then, of course, for adult use, we know that it is associated with the increased incidence of schizophrenia, bipolar, psychotic episodes, cyclic vomiting syndrome, as well as a host of other medical problems. Any other medical facility has to have the benefits and risks presented to the patient, and the patient can make an informed decision. But here you have an industry that is not giving any of the risks to these patients. And even a pharmacy, when you get your prescription, has all of the 10-page thing of all of the possible side effects. I would hope that if we have a medical industry like this, that they would include some of the medical side effects, the known permanent side effects. Is there a way we can make that part of the licensing for adult use in medical marijuana as part of the ordinances at some point?
I think a big question we'd have to explore, Mike, with this particular license, I believe it's completely regulated by the state, that the municipalities do not have the ability to regulate medical marijuana, and the rules and statute are governed there. I could be wrong on that, but I believe that that's the case.
The rules are subject to local regulation.
I'm not sure which aspect. That's all I'm saying, is that that would be a question we would need to pose probably to the attorney to understand better, have city staff research it and identify it. I'm not sure there's action we can take this evening, but it's certainly something we could explore. Any other counselors have thoughts about that?
I kind of agree with the, you know, the warning label thing. I mean, it does seem to make sense.
I agree it makes sense. For me, it's just a matter of what are we able to do?
Well, having been there and toured the facility, they do have an educational component in which when a new patient comes to the facility, they meet with them, and they do discuss, I don't know in the great detail what they discuss with the patients because I'm not a patient and I have not gone through it, but they do have information and they do meet with new patients when they come for the first time to the facility, so.
Yeah, their new patient thing says nothing about side effects. It just tells them how to use it, and that if you don't like smoking it, there's also vaping, and, you know, that if you don't feel like you're getting anything from vaping at first, you might be getting it. And then, of course, if you take the edibles, it's going to last longer, and that you get a more relaxing effect as opposed to the, quote, cerebral high that is often accompanied by vaporizing and smoking. These are their, and then they talk about their topicals and tinctures, but nowhere in this patient packet is there a single adverse effect that can be had from frequent chronic marijuana use or marijuana used by pregnant adults and breastfeeding adults. You know, people are going to do it, that's fine, but they should be able to make an educated decision. And then this other part is just their price list and what brands or what strains they carry. And they do carry the sativa mostly, which is actually the highest THC content of all of them, so.
Well, shouldn't the responsibility of that educational component be on the medical provider who's providing them the green card?
You can get a medical marijuana card for a hangnail. You go online, you fill out a form, you don't even see a doctor, and boom, you have your medical marijuana card for 25 bucks. It's not what it was intended to be. And when we have the adult use, there should really just be this educational component provided to the patient at the time that they get the medication, if it's medication. You can't go to Walgreens and pick up your prescription without a pamphlet that tells you all of the potential adverse effects of that antibiotic or that blood pressure medication, and whether or not it's pregnancy category B or category C, whether or not safe for pregnancy and lactation. All of this stuff is handed to you. Most people, you know, don't read the full thing because if they do, they probably wouldn't want the medication anyway, but for the most part, it's just because patients have a right to make an informed medical decision of all the potential adverse effects of a particular medication or treatment. And in this case, they're providing a medication with no information as to what the adverse events could be. That's all.
Counsel Miller.
I agree with you, Counsel Kaplan, but they're in compliance with the state law, and we don't have an ordinance. So, I mean, there should be a warning label on it, right? They're meeting all their requirements now, and maybe we could talk about that in the future to have an ordinance. It's a good point to bring up, but right now, they're in compliance with all of the state regulations and the city regulations.
So, Counsel Phillips.
And you're, I agree with some of your theory that people should try to be educated, but at this point, it's legal. So whether they're going to Maine Organic or Freddie's Pot Shop on the other corner, the medical thing is pretty well devalued to certain extent.
I can't even buy a bag of peanut M&Ms without a warning label on it that says may contain peanuts.
So, yeah, that is true.
So I would suggest, one way to carry forward your idea and request is on September 2nd, when we started looking into workshop, let's add that to part of the process and see where we want to go.
That's all it is.
And let's just make that part of that process as we look to recreational marijuana and medical marijuana in the state laws and gather all the facts and go from there.
Because until you've taken care of a patient who's acutely psychotic from marijuana use, it, they look like they're on bath salts, some of them. It doesn't happen to everyone. It doesn't, you know, some people don't have permanent effects, but because it's a risk factor, the public needs to know about it. People can make their own decisions.
Is there a motion on the request?
There's a motion.
Oh, there's a motion, and then discussion. I lost my place. With that, all in favor? All opposed? One opposed.
I do that every year.
All right. Stickin' with the agenda. Item 13, presentation of the annual update by Michael McKernan, Director of Government and Community Relations, Maine, for the Jackson Laboratory. We want to thank you for being.
Andrew Longley.
Well, that's a, you switched up on it. Thank you for being here and presenting.
Good evening. I'm not Michael McKernan. My name is Katie Longley. I'm the chief operating officer at the Jackson Laboratory, Chair Hamilton, and members of the city council. We're so pleased to be here tonight. The last time I was here was in 2019. We skipped, this is really our biennial update since we missed you last year. And we are so pleased to be partnering with the city of Ellsworth, be growing our workforce here. We'll share some information tonight with you and with my colleague, Michael McKernan, and be happy to answer any questions. So just to reiterate our mission, what does the Jackson Laboratory do for anyone that is not familiar with us, is we work on genomic solutions for disease, and we work with the global biomedical community to improve human health. Tonight, we're going to go over a little bit of our pandemic, about our pandemic response, growing our team here in Ellsworth, and then Mike is going to share with you some great economic data, economic impact data, and things we're doing with the community. So you may have read that we have been very involved with the pandemic response down east and in Hancock County. Our workforce worked all through the pandemic. We never closed. We were open for business here in Ellsworth, Embar Harbor, the whole time. We were very pleased not to have any layoffs or furloughs. And of course, we followed all the safety guidelines. In addition, we were very pleased that we had a testing facility where we could test all of our employees asymptomatic who came to work, and we could run tests to make sure they didn't have COVID. And we administered over 28,000 tests. Right now, we are encouraging but not mandating vaccines at the facilities, both here in Ellsworth and Bar Harbor, and we have about a 73% vaccination rate. We were also pleased that during the pandemic, we donated tests to first responders. We provided PPE to first responders, and we were very engaged, especially with the town of Bar Harbor, in helping the hospital. Also during this period, we collaborated with the University of Maine and Maine Maritime Academy and did testing for those two wonderful institutions. Over 4,600 tests were performed at the Maritime Academy and then run at our CLIA lab, which was our testing lab. You may have read in the paper that we've been very involved in the research side of the pandemic. We have many of our faculty involved in studying COVID. We have Ryan Tuwi, who's doing work with the state of Maine on the long-term effects of COVID, also known as long COVID, and some of the variants. Nadia Rosenthal, working with the cardiac response in COVID. And we, you know, it's kind of like a war effort. We felt that we were helping to contribute to the research during the height of the pandemic. Again, happy to answer any questions at the end about that. But now let me turn to where we are in Ellsworth. So the Charles E. Hewitt Center, the former Lowe's building, pleased to announce tonight that we have now hired our 100th employee. And this gives you some of the stats on the phasing. The groundbreaking, as some of you will recall, I know you were there, was in August of 2016. Time flies. We're just finishing, we've just finished phase two. We're just finishing, we've just finished Phase 2, and the project completion date for the entire facility is now 2023, which is ahead of schedule. And in fact, with 100 employees hired in three years since opening, we're ahead of schedule in our 10-year plan, which you may recall is to hire 370 employees. So we think we'll get to that 370 mark a lot faster. We're also really pleased to announce that we just recently increased our hourly wages for our frontline workers, most of whom are those types of workers in Ellsworth, and we increased our hourly minimum wage from $15 to $18 an hour. Now, we know that we're competing with lots of retail that are also offering higher minimum wages, but we're proud at Jaxx that we have great health and dental insurance, onsite health services, a very competitive retirement plan, tuition reimbursement, and other benefits that we hope make us an employer of choice here in the City of Ellsworth. We've also added two days of paid volunteer service and have increased our paid parental leave policy. So to work at Jaxx right now, we think is a very attractive proposition, and we have many openings right now. And we hope that those of you here and those listening in tonight will consider Jaxx as a place of employment. I'm going to turn it over to Mike McKernan, who's going to share with you some information on the economic impact that we're having in the city and the state. Excuse me, and we're happy to answer any questions while we're done. Oh, did you have a question? Sorry.
Yes. For the frontline workers in Ellsworth, what is the average level of education that's required for them to even apply for these jobs?
It depends on the position, fairly flexible. I think we now have 70, we have 70 positions open in Bar Harbor and Ellsworth. And if you go to www.jaxx.org and click Careers, you'll see the minimum requirements. And oftentimes, it's a high school education. And we also have a very good training program. And once someone is trained up in Ellsworth, that minimum goes from 18 to 20, 25 an hour. So it's a several-month training program. So we are very pleased to invest in our employees as well. In our tuition reimbursement program, which I just talked to you before, we also push to further the education of employees. And so we grant, if you've worked at Jaxx for over six months and you want to pursue your education, be an associate's or bachelor's degree, we will contribute about $6,000 a year towards tuition reimbursement.
That's great. Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you all. I'm Mike McKernan. I'm the Director of Government and Community Relations for Jaxx in the State of Maine. And I'll share with you some economic impact figures. Jaxx remains the largest employer in Hancock County. We're also the third-largest employer in the State of Maine. If you look at just the nonprofits, we're the largest nonprofit in the State of Maine other than our large hospital systems like Northern Light and Main Medical. So if you take the hospital systems off the top, we're the largest nonprofit. Currently, Jaxx in Maine is paying about $146 million in pay and benefits to over 1,700 jobs. That's not quite the same as the number of employees. I'll get to that in the next slide. We, in 2020, had capital expenditures exceeding $51 million. That created about 400 jobs in those industries supporting those capital projects. We had less visitor spend in 2020 for obvious reasons. There were less people traveling. So we had 280,000 in visitor spend. This is compared to 2019 when we had over $14 million of visitor spend in Maine. So we, you know, we're hopeful that visitor spend number will certainly rise. And then of our economic activity, it generated over $25 million in state and local taxes that were paid. Our total Maine economic impact is $630 million, contributing to the sustenance or creation of almost 5,000 jobs in the state in 2020. So this is our local picture in terms of the number of employees. Right now, Ellsworth and Bar Harbor, we see about the same number of employees residing in each location. And in Maine, again, we're paying about $146 million in payroll and benefits. If we look at just 2021, there has been an uptick in employee residents in Ellsworth. So right now, this year, this is again 2020 data, we have 365 employees in town, excuse me, in the city of Ellsworth this year. So if we look just at the city of Ellsworth, again, 315 employees living in the city, approximately 199 of those individuals own homes, contributing to property taxes exceeding $670,000. If we look at the number of vendors that Jaxx is doing business with in Hancock County, we're looking at about 112. Now, I've removed from that number the vendors who are in the town of Bar Harbor. So these are vendors in areas in Hancock County outside of the town of Bar Harbor. Right now, we're paying 224,000 in water and sewer, and in 2020, we made a voluntary contribution to the City of Ellsworth in excess of $51,000. I should note that a couple interesting bits of information. Our top Ellsworth vendor in that 112 is, I should make this a guessing game, but there's not enough time for that. It's Dead River at $1.2 million. The second Ellsworth vendor is R.F. Jordan at $481,000. And then our other top vendors in the city of Ellsworth are E.L. Shea, F.W. Webb, and actually, not in Ellsworth but close by, Down East Transportation is one of our larger vendors as well. So other than economic development, we're also making quantifiable contributions to the community. As Katie said, we are now providing each employee with two days of paid volunteer service, which we hope they'll dedicate to supporting their nonprofit or their community program of interest. Hopefully, a lot of them will do so in Ellsworth. And we have lots of involvement in town organizations, The Grand, the library, and very active in the schools and teams, and I'm sure people you run into all the time as you're going about your daily life. And I think I over, yeah, I skipped over this very important first bullet. So that's our community contribution for 2021, and we'll make that in December, and that'll be $53,045. I want to spend a couple minutes talking about the Hancock County Technical Center because this is an area where Jaxx and Ellsworth have really been very closely tied for the last several years. So we've partnered with HCTC since its inception. In fact, the founding teacher of the HCTC program, Sarah Petroulis, worked at the Jackson Laboratory and then became the lead teacher of that program. So when HCTC students enroll in the biomedical support program, they have a highly focused program that will prepare them largely for entry into a biomedical profession, and I can give you a couple examples in a minute. But they're also coming down to Jaxx to receive our-level training in things like handling research animals, laboratory safety, how to operate when there's, you know, hazardous material in a research environment. So they're getting the same, in many cases, the same training that our employees receive. So it gives them a real advantage over other students who either don't receive the training or receive something that's more generic. Students have the opportunity to conduct research at Jaxx during the academic year. They have time out of their day when they can come to Bar Harbor, or they can work remotely through a video conference to work with one of our investigators, and they do their own research project. And finally, many students participate in the Maine State Science Fair, and this has been a real, real highlight, I think, of the partnership between HCTC and Jaxx. Let's give you a couple examples. So this is McKenna Martin, and some of these students you may know. She received an award for designing a better Lyme disease test, and she will be attending the University of Maine Cell Biology Program starting next year. This is Ariel Larrabee. She also won a third award in biological sciences this year. She actually won a first award the year before. She's received a full ride to the University of Maine Biomedical Engineering Program, and that's a full-ride scholarship she earned as a result of her outstanding academics, but also her project in the Maine State Science Fair. So we partner with the University of Maine, we partner with College of the Atlantic, and we're able to offer Ellsworth High School students who participate in the fair an opportunity to go to college for free or for greatly reduced costs. A few more examples. This is Bryce Carter. He's heading up to University of Maine Prescott to study wildlife biology. He did a project in developing a micro-green strategy to resolving hunger. Next example is, let me see, this is Amber Rae Pessek, and she is currently a junior, rising senior, and a future pre-med. She was awarded $1,000 to attend the York County Community College, should she choose to matriculate there when she graduates. And the last example I'll give is Lillian Philbrook. Lillian will be attending Central Maine Community College Forensics Program, and she received a full tuition scholarship for one semester at CMCC as a result of her science fair project. So lots of good student success stories that we're proud to talk about. So that's the end of the presentation. We're happy to answer questions.
Any comments?
I have a comment. I just wanted to thank Jackson Lab for everything you did for me personally, working with you guys and being able to store our Pfizer vaccine. You enabled us to vaccinate so many more people, especially the 12 to 16-year-old population. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll certainly communicate that to the large members of the team who were involved in the distribution, the sharing of resources and knowledge with members of the community. There's quite a few people who are involved in that.
I think what Counsel Miller just said and everything you just presented is just a really good example of the importance that you have in our community in terms of what you provide, what you bring, in terms of not only the jobs that you provide and the economic, but what you discussed with our students and their growth and development and the opportunities for a wide range of students, whether they're pursuing college or perhaps stepping immediately into the workforce and preparing them for those types of jobs, working in partnership with HCTC. I just think it's fantastic. And the fact that you chose Ellsworth when you did and that you've been in this community and you continue to support the community is great. So I appreciate what you do and appreciate the time you took tonight to share that, an update.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Item 14, Council Order 082103, Request of the Public Works Director to Accept the Mineral Screening Bid.
Lisa Secklich, Public Works Director. Sorry, got to get organized here. On Wednesday, August 11th, the city accepted mineral screening bids. That is for our winter sand, as we do every year. Four RFPs were requested and three bids were received. You'll see the attached summary of bids. I am requesting tonight to award the bid to KJ Dugus, the low bidder. They have done our mineral screening, they did it last year and then previous, you know, they've done it multiple times and have always done a good job. And so I'm requesting to award it to them.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the bid for mineral screening to KJ Dugus Construction at the rate of $2.55 per cubic yard for screening city sand. The city also reserves the right to order sand screened from January through April 2022 at a price of $3.55 per cubic yard.
Say again.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Item 15, Council Order Number 082104, Request of the Public Works Director to Approve the Water Street Pump Station Engineering Scope Adjustment slash Additional Costs.
Good evening, still. You will see in the attached from our chosen engineering firm, Woodard &amp; Curran, there's a request for a scope and fee adjustment for their work on the Water Street Pump Station project. Their letter requests a total increase of $42,500 to, due to issues slash concerns with budding property owners taking the project to the Board of Appeals for variances on setbacks due to the size of the lot and as well as the efforts required to procure a pump ahead of construction contract due to availability concerns and just a long lead time for that type of item, due to COVID material shortages and design constraints. All these items are further discussed in the letter, as well as there is a representative from Woodard &amp; Curran here if you have any questions for him. After discussions with the city manager and the wastewater superintendent, at this point, we are recommending to pay 75% of their request. Obviously, if you guys would like to increase or decrease, that would be up to you guys. So that's what I have, but if you have any further questions for Woodard &amp; Curran, they are here.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the Public Works Director to decrease the design engineering fee for the Water Street Pump Station project by $31,875 and to allow the city manager to sign required documentation. Funding for this project to be from bond proceeds and future funding.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Counsel Caplan.
This was something that we had already approved at an initial price, but because of the, once they started digging into the weeds, they found it was more complex.
Basically, yeah.
Stan could probably.
I don't have a say.
Clearly, just didn't want you to stand here by yourself.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I've been accused, Nate McLaughlin, Woodard &amp; Curran, thank you, councilors, for letting me be here tonight. I've been accused in the past of speaking too much and into much detail about this stuff.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, I've been here.
So I promised to speak, only spoken two, but I do want to answer any specific questions about the challenges we face and why we've made this request.
So is this, the increase is really, it's due to the increased pump and the delay in getting it, or is there anything around the property challenges that weigh into this?
Yeah, so really, as we enter a design effort, we have two primary challenges. It's, you know, knowing what the project is, and we're fortunate, we've been working here in this community for a long time, and we know the city, we know the city's wastewater system, we know the site very well. But we also have to make some assumptions around what the design effort will be. And in this case, you know, it's a small site, it's supposed to stand site. It's very difficult with property line setbacks, river setbacks, and through the process, we learned that we were really going to be limited to the site as it existed without any sort of consideration for additional property or additional easements. And so through that effort, there was a number of iterations we had to go through to propose different configurations, to go through a second bidding process for the pumps, as Lisa mentioned, because we really just didn't have any margin for error to leave some of those decisions to the general contractor. So we had to make sure we designed around the specific pumps that were going to be installed. So, you know, as we go through that effort and coming in front of the zoning board of appeals, that process, it just ended up being a much greater effort than we originally planned on.
Any other questions?
I could talk for another hour or so about the project.
No. You all set, Nate? Nice job.
Step away from the mic.
We don't anticipate any other increases on this, do we?
There is a potential.
And he's back.
During construction.
So, so looking ahead, we've recommended that the city hold off on bidding the project right now. The bidding climate in the industry is challenging around contractor availability, resource availability, equipment availability, and, you know, we'll see how it goes, but as the infrastructure package gets approved and more funds are. as the infrastructure package gets approved and more funds are brought into the industry, we're just going to have to see what happens. But we're suggesting we hold off for now. The project as designed is more complicated than as originally conceived. And so we are envisioning that the time it takes to construct may be longer, the contract duration that we give the contractor may be longer than what we've originally perceived, Councilor Phillips of Snack.
So what you're saying is, yes, it probably will cost more money?
Correct.
See?
Are we building it out of plywood or something?
Yeah. And I understand it's not, and a lot of it's far and above your control. The current situation of the world, that's seems to be the standard, unfortunately.
It's not limited here to the city of Ellsworth, that's for certain.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request...
We already have. See, now I remembered it.
Nate, it's been a long night already, say. It was nice to see your smiling face. Been a while since you've been here.
You ruined it. I was going to make up for it last. I was going to go right to the vote. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. I appreciate your consideration.
Thanks, Nate.
Item 16, we've removed and replaced with discussion on the process to increase school board membership from five to seven, which would require a charter change. And I believe we do have a member in the school board?
Yes. So basically, we are at the inquiry point. We've looked into how big we think, you know, it would be probably be good to be, it'd be equal to what you guys are. We have about the same budget. We have, we have all of the children in our schools to look after, as well of our staff. Our staff is even bigger than the city staff. And we recognize the fact that when you are educating children, this is a very, very sensitive topic. And there are a lot of voices out there. And having a party of five instead of a party of seven, it doesn't allow for as many voices to really be heard. And I do feel like we are at the point where we are ready to explore that option. Four to five had voted yes that we want to find out from city council, because the way, the way things are written for this city, it is in the city charter that we are a board of five. Therefore, for us to find out anything more, we have to come to you. So now, we would like to hear from you, what are the options, what are the processes, et cetera, from you guys, if that's the way we look at everything and decide things want to go forward, that we're still at the point of information gathering here.
So, thank you. And that's, so the process, I'm going to turn it over to Manager Moser, who can detail exactly what this looks like. The reason it's on the agenda for the council is to make sure that everybody in the community understands what the thought process is of the school board in terms of the potential of requesting this type of action. And because it is, the school board is under the charter, and any changes to the charter, we have to, as a city, follow a process which ultimately include the voters. So this is about starting that process and making sure that everybody in the community has a chance to hear about this. And we'll talk, tonight is just informational, as you said, in terms of what that would look like if, in fact, it moves forward. So I'll turn it over to you, Manager Moser, to kind of explain that process.
Yes. So I reached out to legal and got the guidance that we needed to explain exactly what the process would look like. And as Ms. Miller stated, it is, the school board is identified in the charter as a five-person member board. So in order to increase that number, we would have to essentially have a charter amendment. In the process to do that, the council can propose an amendment. Amendments can also be proposed via petition. But in this particular case, the council can propose an amendment. There needs to be a public hearing after the amendment is proposed. And following the public hearing, the council would need to pass an order to place the question on the ballot. The passage of the order must be at least 30 days prior to the election. And that's the process. So that's what would need to happen.
And so looking at this, so if we propose the amendment to increase the size of the school board today, and then it's, let's say, it gets approved here, it would still have to go towards the voters in November, you're saying?
Correct.
And so that size would not actually increase until the following election year?
Right. There are other elections, but there's an election in June.
Following election cycle, yes.
But, yeah, but we wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to put on the ballot to increase the size and have additional people elected to the school board, so.
And Abby, I understand, after watching the meeting, is that this is partly because with the number of committees that everybody's on, you feel as though each committee's not getting the entire attention that it deserves, because you guys are donating so much of your time.
No, just that we, it is, it takes up a lot of time, each of us serving on the number of committees we do, and giving those, you know, those committees their due, giving the public their due. It's a lot. It's a lot that it discourages people from being on the school board, from people who, especially people who work full-time. Some people manage it very, very well and do it as cool as a cucumber. And for some people, it's, it's a lot. And there is that concern, to keep good people, to make the workload. But at the moment, I said, we wouldn't be ready for you guys to make a proposal to an amendment until we brought it back to the board to officially vote. Right now, we have voted just to find out the process. But yeah, but mostly, in the last couple of years, we, from what we are hearing from people, is that we, there's just so many sides to everybody's input on school. And it does seem more necessary than ever to have everybody be heard, to have everybody have their input and their representation properly on the board.
So I do think, one thing that you mentioned, Manager Moser, that I think is important for the community, is the school board has raised this issue and brought it forward. And the school board may decide to bring this forward as a formal request to the council. But there's also, there may be momentum in the community as well. And that process that you refer to about the petition is a community-driven process. And if that process, if there's that interest out there in the community to present that for the ballot, that's the other avenue that can be pursued. It doesn't have to be presented by the council. It can be presented by the community through a petition. So there really, there are those two avenues where this can appear on a ballot with a charter change. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of those two processes and two ways that that could happen, regardless of what the council does or the school board does, that ultimately, the community has it within their power to put it on the ballot through that petition process.
The other component, although not really significant, but one that Heidi and I discussed earlier today, is there is a financial component as well, because there is, there is a stipend attached to the, to the school board members. So that would have to be just taken into consideration and budgeted for, as well as depending on the election cycle and how, you know, the whole process rolled out. If we tried to, if there was a decision to hold like a special election, then there's a, you know, there's a burden of costs there to the city as well, so.
While I understand the financial part is important, it is very minimal when you consider how small our stipend is and how many hours we work. We are not anywhere near properly compensated for the time that we put in for school board. When you look at the charter and look at what the stipend was supposed to be for, it was supposed to be for X amount of hours per year. We, we are so far over that, that you can't, you can no longer default on that to say, this is why we can't. Because really, if we're going to keep going at this, I mean, this is, it would be cheaper to just bring two more members on board than to ever even think about properly compensating us for the hours that we are working.
Yeah, no, no, that's not at all what I was saying.
No, but it has to be, but in other places, it's different. And other, so people do need to know that. Because places like Florida, those people get paid like $40,000 a year. And there are lots of people in this community that have this very odd impression that, for some reason, we're paid as if we're full-time positions.
Yeah.
And we're not.
Well, that was certainly not my implication. I'm just simply pointing out that if we do expand the board, if the decision was made to do that, we do have to increase the budget in order to cover that expense. That's all.
Abby, just for the public's edification, what is the school board compensation per member?
I'm not, can't remember what it is before taxes, but is it $3,000 before taxes? $2,000?
It's the same as the council.
It's the same as the council.
And that's per charter as well.
Yeah. But yeah, it's a very big distinction, considering the emails we've had lately, to make sure that people do understand that. This is basic, this is a volunteer position. This is a volunteer position. Yeah.
Councilwoman.
So if it's a volunteer position paid, shouldn't really be brought up in it?
They only pay us to legally bind us to the rules.
Okay.
That's, but they don't pay us for the hours we walk, work.
I do this because I want to. The $2,000 means nothing to me about my time doing it. So take that off the table. And I would hope that if we vote on anything to do with anything in this city, the last time, we got 9,000 people to go to vote, 166 of them voted. And I wish that everybody hears me in the city of Ellsworth right now, that more people need to go and vote. It's embarrassing that 166 people voted in June.
So just perspective on, election obviously is November, and based on the process, if this, even if this appeared on our September, September agenda, we then have to have a public hearing after that, which would not happen until October, which would not give us a timeframe of 30 days in advance of the election. So other than having some sort of special election, I don't believe that we're going to be able to move this issue for this election cycle.
Right. But even if we put it off until then and did a special election, we'd probably, we would still need to, if it's, eventually, we would have to have a special election to put people on anyway, because of the cycling that we have. Just the same way you guys cycle, you guys have, I think, two, two, and three. We have two, two, and one. So if we, at some point, and as I said, to attract good people to be on the board, who are willing to put forth their time, to make this a very reasonable position in which you can dedicate, you can properly dedicate your time to it, if we were to put this on a ballot hypothetically to get approved by the voters or to bring into a petition, we would still then need, at one point, a special election to hypothetically elect people to the board because of cycles.
Yeah. And all I was saying is, in terms of the, to determine whether or not the community supports it, we won't hit November. So we would either be putting it in the June primary, that would be the next election.
Schedule election.
Schedule election, or we would have to have a special election earlier than that. So I'm just stating that in terms of the timeline of what we're looking at, where there's, there's no way we're going to be able to meet November.
Right. But there's also no way to avoid a special election as well, like...
But it depends. I think it depends on where we, when we hold this original vote, and then it will have to be determined whether that gets a special election, or if that gets held until June. And then if it passes in June, then there would be a determination about, do we wait till November for, to bring on new board members, or is there a special election? So it's kind of a rolling question. I don't think it gets decided all at once.
It's complicated.
It is. It is.
That's why we want to know.
But are you clear in terms of the process?
I am. But are you guys also have any questions? Anybody else have any questions? Good to know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 17, Council Order 082106, Request of the Public Works Director to Approve the Purchase of a Wheeler Plow Truck from Daigle &amp; Houghton.
Good evening again. So I'm here tonight to, oh, shoot, sorry, request to purchase a new tandem axle or Wheeler plow truck from Daigle &amp; Houghton to update our fleet and replace one of our oldest trucks. It's actually a 2006. After discussion with multiple vendors and the history and knowledge from previous bids, we are requesting to purchase this 2022 plow truck, fully rigged up from Daigle &amp; Houghton. The chassis is currently there at their Herman, I believe, at this facility. And then it will be sent out to be fitted up with plow gearing to our specifications at HP Fairfield, if approved tonight. Due to market and material issues, I know everybody's heard, you know, trucks and vehicles are taking forever. International is currently not taking any new truck orders, and the build dates are into the late 2022, early 2023 for anything, if we were to go out to bid right now. And Western Star is also shut down and not pricing out trucks or accepting bids at this time, because they don't have price points for 20, late 2022 or '23. Just what happens at this vendor has when it's stocked, I reached out to other vendors, they either don't, or it's something we wouldn't want. So we're requesting to purchase this
Council Phillips.
Yeah. I don't know. So that is on the lot, you said, correct?
It is. We went and looked at it the other day. Yep.
The other thing I see is you're trying to, or talking of getting rid of that old, that 2006, that PayStar.
Yep.
The other two trucks you had in the other bid were those 7400s, and I totally agree with you. They're problematic, and rust issues and engine issues. That PayStar is an aluminum cab. It's an extremely heavy-duty vehicle. And for what little money you've gotten to get for it, it might as well remain in the fleet. It has a pre-emissions engine in it. It's a, and I don't, it's less to my knowledge, I don't think there's really anything wrong with it at this time, is there?
So it does have the highest mileage, it's got about 122,000 miles versus, you know, 80 or 40, I can't remember.
Yeah. And if you actually, having done that, but I've noticed several contractors in this area have a few of those out there, and they probably have 400,000, 500,000 miles on it. They just don't get rid of them, because they're tough as nails.
So we had that discussion about keeping it as a backup plow truck. Problem is, is it's kind of big for the routes that we use small trucks on. So it's easier to put a small truck on a big truck route than it is to put a big truck on a small truck route.
Yeah.
That being said, I don't think you would hurt Adam's feelings if we were to decide to keep it, which is why we weren't going to turn it into Daigle as a trade-in. We were going to sell it outright, because we thought we could get more if we sold it outright, which would essentially allow us to keep it for a season longer until, until we could sell it.
I think, and also, I think if you were to do a like and kind replacement of that truck, you have the PayStar, the 5600, is probably more, more in line of a 230, $250,000 truck instead of the 200 you're looking at, the other one. But I say, it's an aluminum cab, and it was, they're just tough as nails. They are. Anyway, that's my, I agree with you buying the truck. I don't necessarily agree with you ditching the PayStar. Lisa, what's your take on the extended warranties?
So we looked into that. I'm requesting to do the five-year engine, the extended vehicle coverage, and the automatic transition coverage. That basically gets you an additional, I have all these notes in there, I can't find them all. Hang on. It gives you an extra four years on the truck, full bumper-to-bumper, essentially. Gives you an extra three years on the engine and an extra two years on the transmission. So it's five years total. It's not an additional five years.
And so, at this point, there's no trade-in, because you're going to, if you do sell it, you were going to sell it... do sell it, you were going to sell it.
Correct. If we were going to sell it, I was going to sell it via online auction.
So it doesn't change the price?
Nope, the price part doesn't change.
Hold on to it. Does make Adam happy and he won't, he won't need to spend the time that he was going to spend to say goodbye to the truck, so that's good.
The one thing I will note is if we do the motion for purchasing, we actually need to take the funding out of the Highway Capital Improvement Fund, not the bond.
Was this approved by, under the bond?
No.
Okay.
Not at this time, no.
Does the one ninety-one include the cost of the warrant, extended warranty?
Correct. It would be the chassis at one oh eight five hundred, the thirteen-foot dump body plus the plowing equipment for the seventy-seven four fifty-six. We're keeping our stainless steel spreaders, we don't need to replace those, so that saved us some money. We're requesting the stainless steel oil pan, which is sixteen hundred dollars because it's something that we, in the older trucks, have replaced multiple times because they rust out easy. And then the five-year engine, extended vehicle, and transmission coverage.
The, the request is for one ninety-one, but looking at the actual quote, this includes the trade-in amount of twenty thousand dollars for the two thousand and six international, which is.
Right, it also includes the spreader, which we didn't need, which is why I broke it out on my memo as to what I'm actually requesting.
So trust your memo.
Trust my memo.
So just for clarity, so this is the, the truck we approved in the budget?
This would be the capital improvement budget, yes.
And then there's a, there was, or is a truck, there isn't a truck in the bond? Okay. Just trying to keep it straight.
We had some confusion too, which is why there's only one truck now.
Okay.
So you wanted from the capital.
Capital improvement account, yep.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the purchase of a twenty twenty-two international tandem axle plow, plow truck with plow, wing, and dump body, and associated gearing supplied by H.P. Fairfield from Dagel and Houghton for some of one hundred ninety-one thousand nine twenty-eight, with funding coming from the Highway Department Capital Improvement Program.
You have a motion?
Second.
You have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you all.
Item eighteen, council order number zero eight two one zero seven, request to the Water Department Superintendent to award the bid for a new one-ton, four-wheel-drive, regular cab work truck, and authorize the city manager to sign all necessary agreements.
Good evening, Reggie Wintle, Superintendent of the Water Department. We sent out six bids, received just a few back. The, I am asking to go with the Darlings price. It is sixty dollars more than the lowest bid, but we will get the truck fifty days sooner. And this is a one-ton gas, single-wheel pickup.
I see that one of the companies actually had one in stock. You have a vehicle that's going to last through the winter, so the half a year you're not going to have a truck is okay?
Yes.
Personally, I'm just as happy you're buying it from Darlings as they pay a substantial amount more tax money to the city of Ellsworth and Quark Augusta if it did.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the Water Department Superintendent to purchase a Ford F-350 from Darlings Ford and Bangor at a cost of thirty-three thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars to be paid from the Water Department Capital Improvement Account.
Second. You have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Hey Reggie, you got it.
Hey Chairman.
There you go.
Have a good night.
Hope you enjoy it next year when you see it.
Take light, mate. Thanks for coming.
Item nineteen, council order zero eight two one zero eight, request of the wastewater superintendent to approve a contract for cleaning and inspecting the sewer mains.
Good evening, Mike Harris, wastewater sewer superintendent. How's everybody doing tonight? Okay.
Mike, you, you could go last.
I can go last. I would like to clean the sewers, vacuum and camera them, and the price is forty-two thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. And it's pretty much the same thing we did last year, the same company, pretty much the same price point, which is a very good deal for us.
Mike, when you do that, do, they aren't solely self-maintained, you must have to have a man go with them, keep an eye on things?
Yeah.
So it just takes one of your employees, kind of monitor and say, okay? Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the Ellsworth wastewater superintendent and approve the proposal from the Ted Berry Company for forty-two thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. Those funds will be coming from the wastewater sewer line maintenance budget line.
Second. You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item twenty, council order number zero eight two one zero nine, request of the wastewater superintendent to approve a proposal to clean the storage and septic tanks at the wastewater treatment plant.
Yes, so in this item, every year we clean out the septic tank because it accumulates a lot of grit and debris that gives us issue with our pumps and stuff down line. This year we're additionally asking to clean one of the sludge storage tanks that has accumulated a, a large amount of grit as well, so I'm having both tanks done at the same time. Or it's just going to, going to become a bigger problem if we don't keep up with it.
Discussion? Action?
Chairman, move the approval of the Ellsworth wastewater superintendent to approve the proposal from Ted Berry Company for seventeen thousand five hundred and eighty dollars to clean his tanks, with the funds coming from wastewater building maintenance budget line.
Recheck the number.
What? One seven eight fifty?
Eight fifty.
Yeah. You said five eighty.
Well.
May, may I offer a friendly amendment? Make that amount seventeen thousand eight hundred and fifty bucks. Why, thank you for catching me on that. You were going to have it coming from your left.
Please, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussions? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Number twenty-one, council order zero eight two one one zero, request of the police chief to award a bid for two new police cruisers and authorize the city manager to sign all necessary agreements.
Good evening, Glenn Mosier, police chief, and you have in front of you somewhat convoluted request on the part of the police department for two new cruisers this year. And the basic reasoning, well, first of all, we, we'd like to get a Ford F-150 police pursuit package pickup, and the basic reasoning behind that, getting away from our typical fleet vehicle of the Ford Explorer, is it gives us the opportunity to have the bed of the truck to carry barricades for road closures and other, for accidents and other things that we need. Also provides us the opportunity to be able to pick up bicycles when they're found and other miscellaneous items that are large and difficult to fit in the back of our, our Explorers. So we're requesting the purchase of the two thousand twenty-one F-150 from Darlings. And then the other request, excuse me, yes, the other request is for a two thousand and twenty-one Chevy Tahoe police package, which again is a deviation from our current fleet. And the main reasoning behind that is because we've been told by multiple sources that the Tahos are fetching somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty thousand dollars in trade-in value. And if you look through our trade-in documents, on average, we're only getting between four and six thousand dollars for our Explorers. So we feel for the investment of just a few thousand dollars more for the Tahoe, the trade-in value far exceeds what we are currently getting for the Explorers. So we felt that now might be the time to explore switching to that type of vehicle as opposed to the Explorers. We have had some recent issues with the, our twenty-one Explorers as well, both last year and this year. Nothing really major, but just some consistent problems with, with, with the vehicles overall. Not really as reliable as the ones we were getting earlier in the, in the twenty nineteen, eighteen, nineteen's. These, these seem to be a little bit less reliable than those older veh, older Explorers. So those are some of the reasons why we've opted to go in this direction this year with these two vehicles, which again is a slight deviation from what we've done the last few years, keeping our fleet consistent across the board with Fords. Happy to answer any questions.
Explorers, didn't they have a major design change in the twenty or twenty-one?
They did, yeah.
Probably explain for that. And the Tahoe isn't substantially larger than that, is it, anymore?
It is quite a bit bigger, which is why we're interested to get it to, and have some experience with it patrolling, you know, our roadways. Because the, the Explorer is a very convenient vehicle for patrolling in the area that we patrol, the urban area, because it has a smaller wheelbase and a, a smaller turning ratio. The Tahoe is a little bit larger, so something else that, you know, that we're looking to explore and, and see if, if it really makes any difference.
That also must offer more comfort for the officers in and out of the cab and.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. The sheriff's office has switched all to Tahoe, Tahos, they're not buying any more Explorers as well. And they're, they're the, the main source that we've, we've gotten information about their trade-in values being so much higher.
Councilwoman Hattler.
Is there a difference in the gas mileage of the Tahoe versus the Explorer and the pickup versus the Explorer?
That I don't know. I suspect that there, there is probably marginal because our Explorers are only getting eighteen to twenty, so.
It'll be lower? It'll be about seventeen?
Oh, no, they, they're, I would anticipate that's probably what we'll get with the truck, between seventeen and nineteen, but I'm not sure about the Tahoe because it is a bigger vehicle.
Twelve, I, I've looked at it, twelve to thirteen on the Tahoe.
On the Tahoe.
My new F-150 is getting twenty-three.
So we can double the gas budget?
Twenty-three.
So we have to double the gas budget?
It's a five-liter.
Current.
But what I was going to say is, recently was looking at vehicles and these police cruisers that they have, they're buying at auctions, so they buy them, they give you forty-eight hundred bucks for trading. The person buys it at an auction for five thousand, six thousand, and then it's on the lot for fifteen to eighteen thousand with nothing done to it at all. So I see the sheriff's department selling two of theirs on the front lawn, and I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be worth looking at if you could get more than, put them out there and put ten thousand on them and see what you get offered.
Sixteen miles per gallon for the, for the Tahoe.
Yeah, buried or done, yeah.
I'm just.
Yeah, no, we, we've explored it in the past, never private sale like that, like the sheriff's office has done. We've explored some of the internet websites and, and there wasn't much of a difference. But we could certainly look into doing a private sale similar. They do sealed bids, which, so it's a little bit of a gamble.
Also, you know, like mentioning, like Jason needs a vehicle to go take care of the streetlights and other maybe C employees. It might be worth keeping one for a runaround vehicle. I mean, you traded it forty-eight hundred bucks, then you need a runaround vehicle and you're going to go buy a new one.
Yeah, no, I agree. I, I think the trade-in value is, it's worth keeping, keeping them if we have a use for them.
Doesn't the sealed bid have like a minimum, you can refuse it if it's too low?
Correct, yeah, you can set a minimum. Yeah.
Questions or action?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the chief of police to award a bid to Quirk Ford of Augusta in the amount of forty-one thousand three hundred sixty-eight dollars for a twenty twenty-one Chevrolet Tahoe police package, and to award a bid to Darlings of Bangor in the amount of thirty-five thousand three hundred fifty dollars for a twenty twenty-one F-150 police pursuit pickup, both to be funded from the police cruiser capital improvement account, nine oh nine oh nine hundred fifty-nine double oh seven. Think I got the numbers right there.
Yeah, a motion?
Second.
And seconds. Further discussion?
As mentioned a few minutes ago, the amount of tax dollars that Quirk Ford of Augusta pays us versus Darlings, the difference in cost on the Tahoe. Darlings is roughly four hundred and fifty bucks higher.
I know where you're going, and I don't mean to interrupt, but Darlings doesn't have the vehicle, so we'd be waiting for probably till spring at the soonest, and Quirk has it on hand.
Oh, he just wants.
That's why.
Just the small.
Well, I should, I should have said that. The, the F-150s are both, they've been ordered, they're both, dealerships are expecting them to come in October, which is why we went with Darlings, but the, the Tahoe is, is available at Quirk.
It's a no-show for six or seven months.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
So there's one F-150.
Correct, yes.
And you're buying it from Darlings of Bangor.
Correct.
And there's one Chevy Tahoe that's coming from Quirk Ford of Augusta.
Correct.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Item twenty-two, council order number zero eight two one one one, request of John Linehan for a grandfather exemption from Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter twenty-five, discharge of firearms, Section one. Sponsored by Council Alliance.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight. I've got a packet for everybody to see if I hear those individually.
Yeah, have you just given them to me, pass them around?
Take one down, I'll send them out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We should. Okay, I've tried to break this down and I've tried to be very simple and organized on everything, so what I've done is I've put an index together for you, and I'll just run down through the items very quickly on the first three or four pages. The back six or seven or eight pages are all documentation off the first that I thought you might want. Picture's worth a thousand words, so I put some pictures in there as well. So I will just run down through by number, and after I do the first three or four, I guess interrupt me anytime if you have a question, but I would rather try to present what I've got, and you can look through the packet and go from there. The index on the first page that you have is the packet items for easy reference, and then closed is the initial request presented in person, which I presented to Glenn Mosier a few weeks ago, and just to find out the right flow to present this. And after talking with him, he suggested that I bring it to the city council, but I put that in as a background for everything that I've started out with. Number two is a brief summary of our requests. I'm requesting a council action to grandfather the discharge of firearm ordinance's state of main discharge distance of three hundred feet because of our Linehan family has owned this property approximately ten years prior to the ordinance enactment in nineteen sixty-nine. And I use the term grandfather just as a general term, it may be a variance, it may be an exception, whatever the legal terminology is, is correct. I would leave that up to you folks, but for my terminology, it's a grandfather. This is something that my family has owned the property, which we've been using for a shooting range and other things since nineteen sixty. The ordinance in question was presented in nineteen sixty-nine, so there's a difference on it. Number three is a survey of our thirty-plus acre lot, which I've outlined in red, showing the location on it of a twenty-five by a hundred and fifty approximately target shooting range with directional arrows showing that no shots are fired in the direction. showing that no shots are fired in the direction of any neighbor whatsoever. Then behind that, number four, is eight pictures of the small 25 wide by 150 long target range, with professionally installed 10-foot-high gravel burns behind for all targets for additional safety. We have shot occasionally up there for years without that in there, but as I called the city office about probably a month ago and just notified them I was gonna be doing more target practicing on my property, I've always tried to have a very open communication on everything we've done up there. I wanted them to make sure if there were already calls from local residents stating there were shots fired, that they knew it was me on my own property up there. So that's why I put that up there. I've got pictures of that showing from the length and width of the whole target range, including the burns that are on there. Number five, I've included a copy of the City of Ellsworth Discharge of Firearms Ordinance, and I've highlighted a couple items of that when I get to that that I want to bring to your attention. Number six, I just tried to do an initial summary request in conclusion, so you could see where I was coming from and what I was trying to accomplish. Six A, the request for the council action tonight is made based on past and present usage by our family prior to this discharge of firearm ordinance enactment, and our intent to continue through this approximate 60-year history my family has had of ownership on that property. B, we have always maintained communications with the Ellsworth Police Department about our usage of this property during our many years of ownership, including a past discussion which had just a few weeks ago about there being a 300-foot discharge distance as per the state of Maine law. Just in the last few weeks did I become aware of the city's 300-yard ordinance, and that's what I'm really gonna get to, is why I believe we should have an exception of variance on that property. Item 6C, a few weeks ago, I called the Ellsworth Police Department as a courtesy, informed them I were doing more organized shooting practice on my property, so if the Ellsworth Police Department had any calls from neighbors regarding this, they would know what was going on out there. I talked to the dispatcher down there, and she assured me that she would relay that information to the police department. Also, in 6D, Ellsworth Police Department did receive a call, contacted me, and asked if they could come and see where I was shooting, which I immediately invited them to come and check it out. Both officers seemed very pleased with the location, safety I've incorporated into my range, then they asked me if it was 300 yards away from my neighbor's dwelling. I told them that I had no idea and asked them if they would check it for me. At the first I had heard that the ordinance was 300 yards and not 300 feet, as the state was, and what I've always talked in the past to local enforcement officers. It hasn't been a recent conversation I have had, but, you know, we've owned the property 60 years, probably the last conversation I had with a Ellsworth Police Department person was, would probably be about 15 or 20 years ago. So I just hadn't come to, I haven't used it for much shooting up there, and it didn't come into question, but I am gonna use it quite a bit now for my own private shooting up there. So that's why I wanted to address it in advance. So that's when that came into being a few weeks ago, that I was in violation. And I said, well, what is my next step to get a variance or grandfather clause, because we've been doing this way before the ordinance and long before that was in effect? And that's when I was informed to go and talk to Glenn Mosier first, who recommended me to come to you folks. So that's the progression of why I'm here, how I got there. And as I told the two officers in question that came to my house, you know, to me, I request it should be grandfathered, variance, or an exception based on the state of Maine law, which we've always been operating under, a 300-foot discharge as we do. So I thank you for listening to me tonight, and I'm praying for a favorable council vote. As I've researched this over the last couple weeks, I have come up with a few other things that I want to bring to your attention. I really believe it should be offered as a variance or a grandfathered exception, just because we have been there long before this ordinance was in place. However, I'd like to present a couple other things to, I think should enter into it for consideration. On page number three, item number one, obviously I wasn't here in 69, I don't think anybody else here was when that ordinance went into effect, but I guess I have to believe, as I've read through it and looked at the state ordinance and looked at the documents that I've had for our city here, it appeared to me like possibly that they were wanting it to be the 300 feet to mimic the state, not 300 yards. However, where we've been there doing our shooting up on that lot, and that's 30-acre lot before that, I simply want to ask for a grandfathered variance of usage, I don't want, or whatever the correct term is, I don't want to ask for a change of ordinance. I don't think there's many properties or families are in the same position that I'm in, so I'm trying to do it the simple way and just ask for variance or grandfather. Item two on page three, Section Two, Item Two of the Ordinance states, "The provision of this chapter shall not apply as follows: Any person acting in defense of person or property." I personally interpret this to allow us to practice and develop our shooting skills as part of our acting in defense of our person or property. I personally have a concern with what's happening nationwide with the defund the police and the, I think blatant laws that are not being followed for the police departments around the country. And I, the first defense for me is our police department, whether it's the sheriff, the Ellsworth Police, or the local state police officers. However, realistically, with some of the things I've watched on the news and seen happening out there, there's not time for a police department to respond if there's an incident at my house or anybody else's house. So I'm prepared to defend my family with firearms at my house, and I want to be a skilled defender of that. I don't want to be somebody that's not proficient in that, so that's why I want to do more practicing, that's why I called the police department stating there would be more shooting done around up there. And I think in the times we're heading in now, it needs to be, we need to be able to defend our family and our own property at our own homes. Item three, and I've discussed this with the code enforcement and with a couple people in town, and I think that there's the term that I wasn't familiar with that's being used now, that I believe is using incorrectly, and I've got documentation on that. And I believe the city is incorrectly using the term urban compact zone in this firearm ordinance, as defined by the State Highway Commission, now known as the Department of Transportation. I spoke extensively with the Maine DOP here locally, and also with their office in Bangor. And the main purpose of the urban compact zone is to determine who's responsible for maintaining the state roads, either the city or the state. It had nothing to do with the discharge of firearms and should not be used within our local ordinance here. I don't think that's the intent of it or the purpose of it. And I had extensive conversations with the Maine DOP up in, up in Augusta, because in our code it refers to the urban compact. When I checked the zone ordinance with our local department here, Zone Enforcement, they had an urban zone, and then they had a neighborhood zone, but I didn't see the urban compact zone. So that's why I got researching to see where that was, because by the urban zone and by the neighborhood zone, the way that it is, I would be allowed to have that in, in my home at the same time. So I think that's a, I don't know how it got put in there or why it was put in there, but I think it is inappropriately and incorrectly put in there. So related to the item three above, I believe there are other inconsistencies in the city's unified development ordinance. Article three, this is number four on the last page, Article Three, zoning districts. My property in question is not in urban, and it is in the neighborhood zone, according to the zoning laws that I've looked at and I have a copy of. The purpose of this neighborhood zone, and I quote, "is to recognize these transition areas and provide for a well-planned, compatible, mixed-use environment." And I underline this sentence here, "It encourages a combination of land uses which might be regarded as incompatible." And when I looked at the conflict between the urban compact zone, the urban zone, the neighborhood, I can see why there might be a conflict residing how this should be, but to me, it's not incompatible with the ordinances that we have. Those uses located in this zone shall be landscaped to ensure compatibility and screening." And then this next sentence, "This purpose of this zone is to protect existing and attract new residential neighborhoods." So my usage of that land is an existing usage, which I believe is not in urban compact, because that's not the way the definition, the way the state defines it. And finally, I'll close with these two things as I've researched it. I believe we have the constitutional right on our property to have a shooting range like I have put up there. Both the Constitution of the United States guarantees this right in what's commonly known as the Second Amendment. Says, "A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." Well-regulated, for example, means well-practiced, as I've researched, proficient, and prepared to do its duty in an effective shape to fight. To me, I want to be able to protect my family by my constitutional rights, and I want to be proficient and well-practiced to be able to do that. So the Constitution of the United States guarantees that. And number six, also the Constitution of the State of Maine also guarantees this is right in request, in numerous places, specifically in Article One, Declaration of Rights, Section 16, to keep and bear arms, every citizen has the right to keep and bear arms, and this right shall never be questioned. Again, I thank you for your time. I've gone through those four kind of indexes to give you an idea of what I'm trying to accomplish. The next six sentences or six pages in there are things for document that I think will help you to look at it. If you look at the map of the survey that I put in there, I highlighted out there what our land was in red for you. I had a request to do it on a Google map. I didn't have the expertise to do that unfortunately, but I did have a survey, so I just lined it all out on that, and I put in the middle where our 25 by 150-foot shooting range is with targets. That's where it's located. The large map I have is to scale, this one is not, when I reduced it down, but that gives you an idea, it's approximately in the center of a 30-acre parcel land, a little over 30 acres actually. On the next page, I put in eight photographs of what my range looked like, and anybody's welcome to come up anytime, just like when I had a call from the police officers, they wanted to know if they'd come up. I said, "If you're free right now, I'm at my house, why don't you come up right now?" So they came up, I walked them through the range, what it is, I took pictures of it from the start of the range up to the 150-foot mark, and I tried to show you from side to side what it looked like going through that. There's eight pictures in there. Seven of them show the range itself. I tried to highlight, there's a 10-foot burn that I just recently put in up there. I haven't had it in the past because of my shooting was very minimal up there. But now I plan on doing extensive target practice, because I want to hone my skills, and I want to take the extra precaution. I'm a member of two public ranges, and they have similar type of burns, but not as condensed in what I have as this. I've really, I'm a big bug on safety, so I tried to go over and above and make sure there's extra safety everywhere on this, on this range that I put in there. Even though it's smaller than a public range, I think I have an extensive amount of safety on there. I also knew I was gonna start going and shooting at a more frequent clip up there. For example, I shot three sets of five the other day, so I shot 15 times within about a 15-minute thing, and that, and that was where the call came from, the Ellsworth Police Department up there. And so what I've done is put that in there, and I've also gone around the whole perimeter of my property, and I put in signs that said, "Active shooting range, please no trespassing," all the way around the property, which I want to make sure that this, everybody understands, I want to make sure my neighbors know that I have it up there, I want to make sure the police department knows, and I'm a transparent person up there. So I want to make everybody know what I'm doing up there, why I'm doing it, and that I've taken the utmost precaution, so that there's not gonna be any problems whatsoever because of that shooting up there. So that's the documentation I put in there. The last document I put in was discharge of firearms, which I'm sure you're all familiar on it. And if you look at the, in there, in there, I put the highlighted in them, it shows the urban limits in, in Section 1, and then down in Section 4 refers, refers to the urban compact by the State Highway Commission. And that really has nothing to do with anything to do with shooting. That's, I explained to you what that was and the definitions in there, and I got that straight from the straight DOP up in, up in Bangor. And I also wanted to highlight Section Two, Number Two, and where it says, "The provisions of this chapter shall not apply as follows." And I highlighted Number Two, "Any person acting in defense of persons or property." And I'll go back to the constitutional rights we have to bear arms, to maintain and to practice up there. And part of that is the right to practice, to be prepared to defend your person, your property up there. So I've done a lot of research on it, I've tried to summarize it down as best I could for you guys to look at and give you a script and an index to go through, and I'd be happy to handle any questions that you have from that point on.
Counselor Hattler?
And thank you very much for your time.
Correct me, but the way I'm reading this, if I look at the entire Section 1, it says, "It shall be unlawful to discharge firearm at a distance 300 yards of any dwelling house within the urban, urban limits of the city of Ellsworth, except by owner, resident, or persons authorized by the owner or resident." So wouldn't that mean that because you're the owner?
Well, I think if, if I, if I can plead the city's case on this part here, what, what I was cited on or what I was mentioned to, when it goes to a distance of 300 yards above, and I'm not 300 yards from a dwelling, I understand what you're saying, but I, I want to say what their concern was, is that I, I wasn't 300 yards. They checked it for me, and I was 385 feet, is what they told me. So I had no idea, I was always, that's the first I heard was 300 yards was when they came up that day. I've always gone under 300 feet.
But looking at the year that this was enacted, 1969?
Correct.
And the amount of hunting that was in Ellsworth, et cetera, et cetera, it would make more sense that it was meant for people coming onto your property and hunting within 300 yards of a dwelling, because that's why it says, "Except by owner or resident or persons authorized by the owner or resident," meaning somebody who gave permission to hunt on your land, as opposed to posting your land, no hunting, no trespassing.
Yeah.
So I would imagine that the way this reads, it's almost like, it reads like he's exempt.
That, that's the way I took it as well.
I, I have a different interpretation of it. What I'm reading it as, if you have a single house, if your house is the only house within 300 yards, and there is no other homes in that area, that excludes it, but if you're, if there's another homeowner within that 300-yard distance, now you're in violation of the ordinance, you cannot shoot. So if you had a single property that didn't have any other homes around it, you could shoot, that doesn't prohibit that. But once you have surrounding homes, you're in violation of that ordinance. You cannot shoot within 300 yards of another house, and that's the issue that you were cited on, right?
Right, that's what the officer, I wasn't cited.
Not cited, but that's...
Right, they were very, very nice, very kind, I was glad to have them come up and explain to me, and that's the first time I've heard of 300 yards.
But then it says, "Except by the owner," but he's the owner.
He's not the owner of the house next door.
But he's not the owner of the other house.
The other house isn't on his property, though, is...
But it's within 300 yards.
But it's within 300 yards.
You can't shoot within 300 yards of another person's property.
If all the neighbors said, "Go ahead and shoot, it'd be okay."
No.
If all the neighbors said you could, then you could.
I don't believe that's true.
But...
Counselor...
Mr. Linehan, is there a place on your property where you could be 300 yards from the nearest house?
I'm not sure if there is or not, because, you know, if you're talking 900 feet, so now you're talking 1,800 feet. So I'm not sure if there is one that I could put it on there. The reason why I put it in this location, because this is the safest location, period, on the lot for any type of shooting. It doesn't hit any, well, it, I guess it did hit in the direction of a house, but it probably would be 1,500 feet or, lengthwise that way, but, but by the side, on the side, I can't get that side block up there, or I don't think I could. But if I did, I'd have to move up on top of the hill. Right now, I'm in a very low place where the brooms keep everything down there. I mean, this is the safest place on the whole 30 acres by far.
Counselor Phillips?
Hey, I appreciate your fervor, John, but you gave us this map. I pulled up the GAS program from the city of Ellsworth, I'm looking at that, and within 150 feet of your line, I'll say, to the right or whatever, are probably 40 or 50 houses. You've got a school that's probably less than 300 yards away, and you've got another school that's what, 400 yards away, you're surrounded by people. I understand your desire to shoot, but I think it's a poorly conceived spot, and there's no decent way, a neighborly way to do that without disturbing countless other people. I just don't see the logic in trying to, to disrupt the whole neighborhood for your satisfaction of firing your gun on your property when it disrupts how many people on Western Avenue, Argon, Holt, Wichita Way, then you go on the Shore Road, we go across, you've got the school across the road, you're fairly close to the, what is it, Fieldstone, that Oakfield Development, there's hundreds of houses within a short distance of that. It makes no sense, common sense, to have it be allowed there. And I understand you're trying to promote safety, but that's the thing, that bullet is fine, it goes where you aim it, but there are ass instances that can happen. It's just not a, in my mind, you haven't convinced me or even slightly convinced me that this is a great idea.
I appreciate that, I'm not mad. I'm not here to be mad... I'm not here to be mad at you, just here to discuss it.
I have the same thoughts about a train, and it almost gave me a head attack the other day because it blew its whistle when it was about 100 yards from me. So maybe that would stop that whistle blowing and everything else in Ellsworth.
So could I just speak to the process? Because there, again, I reached and contacted legal regarding the concept of a grandfathering. And, and the advice that I was given is that you can't grandfather an ordinance. An ordinance is put in place, and it's enacted, and it's the letter of the law from that day forward. And if you're engaging in activity and the ordinance goes into effect, then you can no longer engage in that activity. So the process in order to get some sort of resolution here, obviously you can do nothing, or the other process would require an amendment to the, to the ordinance. So we have to go through the process to change the ordinance. And whether that's warranted with this particular circumstances or simply because the ordinance was written in 1969, I don't know, but, but that's the process we would have to go through in order to make any sort of changes or accommodations either that aren't already in existence in the ordinance.
I just want to make a comment that this, for me, it's not a matter of gun rights and ownership, it's a safety issue. And I think in your presentation, I don't think you're arguing that there shouldn't be any kind of restrictions in terms of where people can shoot.
Correct.
Right?
I mean, the state is 300 feet.
Right.
And I think there needs to be a reasonable, fair thing.
And that's, that's what I heard you say.
300 yards is like, you know.
So, so that's, for me, that, that's the question is, what are the safety parameters in place? And is, is 300 yards the right distance? Is it 300 feet? If there needs to be a change on that, if there's momentum for that kind of request, then, then I would certainly support a, a discussion in the future about changing the ordinance. I agree in terms of grandfathering, I, I don't think we can do that anyway, but I don't, I think grandfathering just sets up the city for an endless array of exceptions which would lead to even greater safety threats from properties that may not be as large as yours. So I, I just, for me, I don't think that that's the right direction, a grandfathering for that, for those reasons.
Got you. And I'm not sure, and when I sent the, the letter which I put in there, my last sentence I put in for Glenn was, "I'm looking for a simple, common sense solution for both the city and my family. Please help me." So I'm looking for input, I'm not here to, you know, to, I'm, I'm trying to find out what's the bait to do it, because I, I really will fight, and I mean that in a good way, fight for what I believe is right to do that in the proper way like that. So if it needs to be, I like to do things simply in life. The older I get, the simpler I want to make things. So to me, if I could have got a grandfathered range, that's the easiest way. If it requires an ordinance change to try to get that from 300 yards to 300 feet, which I have to believe that was probably the original tent back in 69, at least that's what I've always gone under, and that's what the people I've talked to have always said, 300 feet. So that's the first I heard was 300 yards on that. So if that's, you know, I would prefer to do it the simple way, but if it requires the other steps to do, then I'm willing to do that, or whatever, whatever you guys recommend, that's what I'm here for.
John, is this just a range for yourself?
What's that?
Is this just a range for yourself?
Correct. That's correct, private range.
Right, pri, I understand it's private range, but if I wanted to go up there and shoot, if your neighbors wanted to go over there and shoot, if your friends wanted to go over there and shoot?
Yeah, if I, if, if you and I, if I invited you up to shoot, I would have friends up there to shoot with me.
Okay, so it isn't just, just for you?
No, no, anything I have up there, I mean, I use, everything I have on my property up there, my friends are welcome to use. But I'd invite them, you know, I mean, I would.
The reason I ask, because I'm thinking back to the firecrackers, the ordinance that we passed four years ago was on fireworks. A lot of people were very upset with them because of the close range, close proximity to their homes and the noise from them. One person used the term noise pollution. And I'm wondering if that doesn't somewhat come into play here? You know, if, if you had a, I don't know, a western shootout, you know, on some weekend, you know, on your range with six, seven, eight, 10 people, how much noise that would be for the number of homes in the immediate vicinity of it? And I, I really would, I would have a concern with that.
Well, limited to my family, and one guest for each would be fine with me. I just want to be able to shoot and practice there. You know, I'm just looking for a simple solution. I'm not trying to have a public range, and there's plenty of, and I'm members of them around the area, but you have to drive 30 minutes, 45 minutes to get to them.
Counselor.
Is this your next business adventure?
No, no. I, I'm serious, I'm concerned about safety for my family and myself, and my property. Our country's in trouble that way from law enforcement, for not supporting and backing law enforcement. I back the blue 100%. I support them 100%. Realistically, when I watch the problems happen on, on TV and I see what's happening to people, a police officer can't be there in time to protect people. People need to step up with our own constitutional rights and take their own responsibility to protect themselves. And I'm going to do it for my family. I will protect my family. Now, they're my first line of defense is the Ellsworth Police Department, but if, if somebody's breaking into my home, I'm not waiting for the police department to come.
Counselor.
How many rounds do you think you've shot there, say, in the last six months?
Oh.
Total?
I've shot probably, maybe those 15, that's all I've shot probably. I don't think I've shot till I got my range all set up with the berms and everything else there.
I hate seeing these ordinances stop people from doing anything they'd normally do on their land. I just, I hate seeing people not being able to use their land for what they want to use it for.
So, so Counselor, do you think that any property owner should be able to shoot weapons on their property regardless of how close they are to other homes?
Well, I, they used to shoot beside my house, thousands of rounds a day, and it was probably closer than 100 yards, but I didn't even care.
No, but do, do, do you, don't, do you think that ordinances should address safety issues to protect citizens, to protect within the schools? Should a house that is right next to a school by the park be allowed to, to shoot? I mean, that's, to me, that's the issue, is what is a reasonable safety measures addressed in an ordinance? If you don't like the scope of an ordinance, then by all means, come forward with, with a plan for that. But to say we shouldn't have ordinances would create a lot of problems, and particularly for an issue like this, would create safety issues. So I'm in favor of ordinances that keep people safe and protect the community.
I'm in favor of ordinances that keep people safe and protect the community, which here I see a 10-foot berm of dirt, which I've shot into gravel, the bullet stops a foot and a half into the gravel. It doesn't leave the gravel. If it hits a tree, it doesn't leave the tree. It'll, I mean, it's safe to me. And when it's... All the trees for backstop, if something ever did escape the gravel, so it comes down to me that it would be a noise, a noise thing if anything. I don't see a safety issue with this at all. I've shot, I mean, for, I was in the military shooting 100, thousands of rounds a year. I never had a bullet go away and hit anybody.
Counselor.
Most gun ranges, for example, the one out in Bucksport, you have gun site, gun site, gun site, 10 feet apart. You go to Maine Military, you're literally three feet apart, because bullets don't go sideways. They only go forward where you're shooting. The only issues I could potentially think of, you're not using any long-range rifles out there, are you?
I haven't, but I could.
But you're not currently, because?
With the berms, the 150-foot is plenty to handle anything up there, safety-wise.
So like with the AR, I mean, you get some rise at the end, and you're not in a position where it could rise above the berm?
No.
Okay. And with the, are you, what kind of shell casings are you using?
Most of the time, 9mm.
But are they brass or lead?
They'd be brass.
Okay. So it's not like there's any risk of poisoning the groundwater or anything like that? And the other question is, is there a possibility that if somebody were to have a property similar to this, that if they enclosed it, they could apply for a permit to be able to have your own indoor range?
Yes, it's in the ordinance that if it was enclosed, you could have it.
What's an enclosure?
That would be up to code.
I, that is, I don't want an enclosed range, you know, I, I love the outdoors, that's why I live in Maine, and, you know, so I don't want an enclosed range. I could put one in there. And I looked up the definition, it wasn't much, you know, it doesn't even need windows and the way that it's defined, it could be a very basic thing, but I'm just not looking for an indoor type of thing, you know?
Right. But if, if we can't, I mean, look, I'm, I'm all for people doing what they want on their property, and, you know, I was trying to see exactly how wide your property is, but I only have this, this one side, it says 471 feet, but the other side looks like it's about the same, so you've got close to 1,000 feet of property just side to side, and then this one is 1,600 feet. But it just so happens that that range is in the one spot, and the ordinance is just enough that it's not going to fit based on how they do the ordinance. And we either eliminate the entire ordinance for everyone, but then you've got people that are really close that may, you know, decide they're going to set up a target practice in their own backyard, but then maybe they're not as skilled. And you know me, I'm like gun rights all the way. But there's got to be a workaround for this.
So I'm going to.
And I think by enclosing it, that might be your workaround.
So.
Because the ordinance allows for enclosures.
At this point, we still have several lengthy agenda items, and what we've learned is that the, the agenda request to grandfather, that we can't grandfather, we don't have the, the authority to do that, so there's no action we can take tonight on this. So I would propose if, if there's another avenue that somebody wants to pursue, that can happen, but that has to come forward in a, a different council meeting.
It's a request to grandfather can't be done. I move we deny the request.
Yes, that's, we can, we can vote that way, yes. Is that a motion?
I move we deny the request.
There's a motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Two opposed.
I appreciate your time. Could I just ask one question? Because I just want to know what the process is like that. So if, I guess the next step for me would be to try to get a change from 300 yards to 300 feet. That would solve my problem right there.
Yeah.
What is the next, what is the process, I guess, to do that?
So I'm, just personally, what I would recommend is, I would get with city staff to have that discussion about what, what that looks like and what challenges that might create, because the city staff are the ones that would come forward to the council with their recommendation. And if there are some barriers that complicate this with all the code, that's, that's what I would recommend, is having that discussion, so you know what you're getting into before springing something forward.
And who would I, who would I talk with the city staff? Who would that be?
Who?
We'll start with me and code and planning, so.
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate you.
Any other, any other thoughts on that? I mean, that's just my thought in terms of the starting process.
I remember looking for a process, that's where I'm looking for, what the process is.
Where does the police department share that? We have a range in Hancock.
In Hancock.
Up behind the Blueberry Factory.
But I appreciate everybody's time, thank you very much. If anybody wants to come up and look at it, please give me a call anytime. You're more than welcome to come up and take a look at it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 23, Council Order Number 082112, Presentation, Discussion, and Action on Utilizing the Additional Superintendent Higgins.
Good evening. Do you have a copy of the memo that was sent to City Manager Moser with regard to the action taken by the school board?
Yes, it's in your packet.
Just for, for the public, action taken by the school board at their August 12 meeting, actually was a good problem to have the additional subsidy that came forward through the second budget passed by the main state legislature. As we know, there was just under $700,000 in additional school subsidy, and back at your meeting in May, I believe, when you approved the budget, you passed an order that gave, in essence, three options of how that funding could be used. We've had several meetings that involved the school board's finance committee, the school board had a meeting, our finance committee met with your finance committee, sounds kind of funny, the school board's finance committee met with the city's finance committee, Mayor Hamilton was there also, City Manager Moser. Following that meeting, our finance committee made a recommendation to the school board. And ultimately, the recommendation was to take the $696,000 in subsidy and break it up in three options. One would be to increase expenditures in board-approved cost centers in the amount of $127,614.82. The two items that we're requesting increasing expenditures for are the increase of a teaching position at Ellsworth High School from halftime to one-point full-time equivalent, that's something that came about after the budget was approved, and to increase the cost center for Hancock County Technical Center by $91,850 to replace a boiler that went down after the budget was passed. The second item would be to create a tax stabilization reserve in the amount of $369,678.82. And the purpose for that would be, you know, not knowing where the future's going to take us, you know, certainly we're coming through, hopefully, the end of a pandemic, but we're looking forward and seeing that there may be some uncertainty out there. This would be an opportunity to still return those funds to reduce the local tax burden, but not all at one time. As we've talked about before, when we're talking about fund balance on the regular side of the budget, if you use too much of that in one year, you're setting yourselves an artificially high amount of money and creating a potential cliff in subsequent years. So the intent of this tax stabilization reserve is to provide an opportunity to provide that money back to taxpayers in subsequent years. And from our conversation with the city's finance committee on a Friday morning, at that time, we were recommending about $119,000 to be used to reduce a local tax commitment for FY '22. The proposal that was approved by our school board with a request for support from the council was to reduce that local tax commitment initiative for education by $200,000. Including your packet were spreadsheets, one of the budget that was ultimately passed by the school board, by you as a council, and by voters on June 8th, and a second sheet that would show a reflection of what I just described that the board approved, illustrating the differences between those two budgets. We also have our finance committee members here this evening, Paul Marcosian and Anir Hasham, so certainly can entertain questions, and if there's anything that I missed that either you gentlemen would like to add?
Yep, not at all.
Questions? Counselor.
So you guys got back how much, or what, what is the over, the overage?
What, what happened was, when the state passed their second budget, they changed the local and state share. The state share of education went up to 55%, which has been a goal for a number of years of the state. It also reduced the local amount required to raise to obtain subsidy. What that resulted in was an increase in $696,000 in subsidy coming to the city of Ellsworth for public schools.
Okay. And, you know, I'm just looking at like taxes in general, and we, people are overtaxed as it is, and with the anticipated tax increases after they just passed this $3.5 trillion thing through the federal government, we'll probably have more for the schools, but the taxpayer is just going to still be overtaxed as it is. So the more you can return to the taxpayer, as far as I'm concerned, the better.
Thank you.
Just, under the, and I can't remember what you referred to, the reserve account, it's property tax relief?
The, the title that we've called it is Tax Stabilization Reserve.
So with that definition for tax stabilization, is that when you have a reserve account like that, it becomes a restricted account that you can only use it for that, a purpose that is targeted for?
That is accurate.
Like if you have a special education fund, can only be used for special education, how would these dollars be restricted in terms of, since it's, since it's going to pay for the budget of the school? How do you, how does that get applied in terms of that restrictive nature?
So if, if we move forward to FY '23, when we do the next budget cycle, as we move through that process, we'll take a look at, where are we? What is state subsidy going to be? What are our expenditures? And at that point in time, if the decision is made to use that in FY '23, the school board would come back to this body and get approval to use it for that purpose. That's the only purpose it could be used for.
So, and, and the council likewise? So, and, and the council likewise could, in terms of where the council has the, um, authority to, first step is to approve the proposed budget or to suggest not line item, but the overall budget.
Right.
Um, if there's X number of dollars in this tax stabilization fund, the council could say, um, we're, we're recommending cutting it by that amount if you haven't used it and you could then use that for that purpose. So it would, that fund would go to the taxpayers, it would just be, um, pushed out into future years.
Well, when we say go to the taxpayers, um, let me answer it in this way, you know, when we're talking about the final amount, using two hundred thousand of it to reduce the local tax burden this year, this is not a check going back to the taxpayers. What it is, is a reduction in what the local commitment needs to be. So with that, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, that would be the purpose for it in subsequent years.
But you can use these dollars, for example, for targeted to replace the roof. That's a capital item, you would, you would use it as part of to reduce the overall budget. It would be a dollar amount that would come in to reduce the overall-
Yes. Correct.
Councilor.
Then there are other needs such as the roof, which is not going to get any cheaper and could cause more damage and cost more money in the long run. So it is a delicate balance and if that's what you recommend, I'm willing to go with that.
If I could just add, Councilor Middle, that, that's, that's a recommendation that, um, we came up with, our finance committee and our entire board, um, approved it as well.
Okay.
Councilor Blanchett.
The taxpayers of Ellsworth in the last sixteen to eighteen months, because of COVID, have been through hell. A lot of them haven't said boo, they've just made their budgets tighter and did what they had to do. They didn't seek any outside help or ask for anything. They just went, in a lot of cases, without. The school budget was approved by the taxpayer and the city council for what it was. Suddenly, the state decided they're going to pony up and pay the fifty-five percent that they promised us fifteen years ago.
Quite a while ago.
So now that extra funding that has come back to us should be reimbursed to the taxpayer. Not next year, not through some scheme of putting it in a lockbox and, and calling it a tax stabilization fund. It isn't what it is, as far as I'm concerned. That's just, that, I'll, I'll use the term slush fund. It'll be spent on anything other than tax stabilization, but it will be spent. The budget for the furnace, the ninety-one thousand, was already in the existing budget, correct?
No.
And that was approved?
No.
Where was it?
Through the budget process, initially it was in there because we anticipated that budget failing. Ultimately, when we looked at the fund balance, again, this is a conversation before we knew about this additional subsidy. We looked at the fund balance that we had and we were record, going to recommend, once the audit came in, putting an amount of money into a capital reserve or HCTC to cover that cost.
Out of the fund balance?
Correct. So now, now with this, we're recommending using the money to pay for that boiler now because the boiler died a couple of weeks later. And with the fund balance, once the audit is done, um, our recommendation would be to put that into either a capital reserve for the entire school district or special education reserve, because those are costs that are increasing rapidly. And that, that's a place to have that money. And with all, with all the respect, I just want to say, this is not a scheme, this is not a slush fund. We've been very transparent with how we're recommending the funds be used. There's, there's, there's nothing to be hidden here.
My point exactly, if there's nothing to be hidden, take the six ninety-seven and return it to the taxpayer, period. Simple as that. It, it, it can't get any more simple than that. I understand there are other expenses. I understand there may be other expenses and in some cases there may not be other expenses. But I, I can't operate on conjecture. I have to operate on facts. That's what the, the voters elected me to do. And return the six ninety-seven to the voters, uh, to, to the taxpayers. That's my take.
I do know we have one member of the public want to speak?
Yes.
So if we could do that now, then we'll continue the discussion.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Ellsworth City Council, my name's Raymond Williams, fifty-six Hancock Street. This money that has, in two thousand and four, the voters of Maine in a, I believe it was a referendum question that was actually created by a petition from the people voted to bring the share paid by the state of Maine for elementary and secondary education to fifty-five percent of the funding, of funding spent in each year, depending how that's computed by the education gurus. Mainly the Maine Department of Education, but there were also some superintendents in this state who have a very good handle on how this is done. Since that time, that was voting was approved in two thousand and four. I, my recollection is it was rather decisively. It was supported by all the good education people, MEA, Maine Education Association, Maine School Management Association. It was also supported by the Maine Municipal Association. And also, I think, various business and labor interests supported it. It was basically supported by everyone and it was approved. Different, people had different ideas. Maine Municipal Association, I'm sure was behind it because of the theory that it was going to be used to in some way reduce the taxation of, people would have to pay taxation, people pay on their property tax. I'm sure the NEA was producing it because it was, was supporting it because it was going to provide a more stable amount of money for their purposes. Uh, and the Maine School Management Association, probably the same thing can be said for that. It provided a stable amount of money for their purposes. Now, what has happened since two thousand and four, I can't remember. And maybe, uh, Mr. Higgins could tell, tell us what the percentage, what the percentage of state contribution to the, uh, school budget overall in the state to elementary and secondary education at that time was. But I have in the back of my head that it was somewhere in the vicinity of forty-five percent. And since then, in seventeen years, it has, you know, it, it is, it's gone up slowly, so slowly. And I actually, I think, and that there even have been a few years that where the figures are figured, that it went backwards a little bit. And, and so we never had this problem. I think maybe a few years ago, there was one time there was a, a larger amount of money came in. The legislature changed the subsidy late and there was a large amount of money. But most years, it, it didn't have a big increase in subsidy from year to year, so it was really worried and a, a problem for anyone. And, and in the years when it did go up, quite often, it was done not at the last minute or even beyond the last minute as it was this year, so that the people knew, so that the school committees and the town councils knew what they were going to be getting. And in that case, you know, it just went in and both sides spent their money and it was utilized and it was never really utilized for tax relief. In fact, I don't really say that for the ordinary taxpayer in a city, a town, in this state, that probably over these years, that they've ever got any real tax relief. This year, because of the way the budget was done, passed really early on a, on a majority vote, so the state of town of education could get its original figures out, which, which you had, and that's what this budget was based upon. And then eventually came that, there was a, there was a supplemental budget, which the governor had, which was presented by the governor and was passed by the legislature, which brought it up to fifty-five percent, which is why, you know, late in the game, the city of Ellsworth got as the amount it received, six ninety-six. And I just added up the two other figures here, I think it was six ninety-six and six eighty-two and some change, or somewhere along that line. It was, um, six ninety-six, five hundred thousand. Now, I, my basic feeling was that, and I thought about coming to the Maine meeting when this was approved and council order five-two-one-oh-seven-H, which contains these three provisions in it of how any excess, uh, or found money or increase in state education subsidy after the fact could be optioned to be spent. And it might have been at that time wise for the members of the council to possibly have put some percentage into each of these three categories or possibly just, uh, get away with, uh, two of the categories to increase expenditures for school, purposes in cost centers categories approved by the school board and to increase the allocation to reserve funds and just, uh, order that all of the money be used to decrease the low local cost share. But that didn't happen. Now, I tend to sympathize very strongly and support Council Blanchett's proposal of saying all should be spent this time, because that is one way that this year, taxpayers of Ellsworth would receive a reduction in their taxes and, uh, which they should be getting at, at least one time from this proposal. And this, if this, with this found money this year, new money and really new money, if something isn't done to reduce taxes this year, to get the benefit of this for the taxpayers, it isn't going to happen, because it's not going to happen next year, because the money that comes in for next year is going to be all in the general subsidy. And, uh, I suspect it would be probably very difficult to figure out what is, is, what amount of it is tied to the increase in holding spending at fifty-five percent. But this year, you know what the figure is and it can be used to give Ellsworth taxpayers a reduction in their taxes and a rather substantial one. Based on what I think was the budget that was approved for the city. The school department cost, and this I took from the agenda for the meeting, for the budget meeting. I do recall at that meeting that when you started considering it, uh, there were some figures that were mentioned that didn't make sense and you took a recess to try and get the correct figures. But I have what was initially presented.
So can I, I'm just going to ask you to, to, to wrap up in terms of your thoughts on this so that we can move forward?
I'm, I'm getting there, sir, and I'm, I'm going to be quickly on about-
But I've given you plenty of time, so I just ask you to summarize.
Okay, Ellsworth School Department was getting eleven million, five hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and six dollars. Subtracting six hundred ninety-six thousand from that would be, they would be getting from taxation, ten million, eight hundred and seventy thousand. That would be a good fair reduction, uh, for the city. And I would just suggest you possibly could consider tonight a motion to reconsider council order zero-five-two-one-oh-seven-H to provide that all or a substantial portion of it, maybe not necessarily all of it, but, uh, possibly half a million to six hundred thousand should be, uh, into the third category to decrease the local cost share expectation for local property taxpayers funding public education. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, other questions? Comments? So seeing none, I, I would just remind everybody, um, in terms of the vote we did take and it was just referenced by the comments, um, that the way the, uh, motion that was made was that the school board had the authority to allocate funds, um, as they chose with the understanding, and this was not part of the ordinance, so that, I mean, part of the resolution, the motion, that was the motion. The school board had the authority to do that. In subsequent discussion about that, the school board said that they would work in good faith with the council to allocate those dollars. So I'm, I'm just refreshing everybody's memory in terms of what that motion was, what we voted on, and where we stand this evening with, with the information. Councilor Grindel.
So with that said, I guess I don't understand what our motion would be, because we've already voted to allow them to spend it the way that they see fit and they've had discussions with us, correct? So we really don't have the authority to say how much. Is that correct?
I, I believe based on that motion, we, we do not have the authority to, this is not an up or down vote on the plan. They, they brought, the school board has brought it back to us as they said they would in terms of working collaboratively with us for our feedback, which we are providing. But I don't think what we sent to the voters and what the voters approved was the language that said that any additional funding, the school board would approve. That's what the voters voted, that was the language in, um, that they voted for. Um, so, I, and I believe that I'm correct on that, is that? So it, this wasn't, this was, once we moved it to the vote and once the, the citizens voted, that's what they, they, they decided. Um, so I don't, we don't have the authority to then overturn the voters by directing those dollars differently. We just don't have that authority, that's not what we voted, and that's not what the community voted.
Those hundred and sixty-six voters, right?
So I just want everybody to be clear on that.
Was it mentioned in the, what we voted on, what the citizens voted on? If extra money came from the state?
I believe so.
It was?
I'm pretty positive. Do you remember the language?
There's only one agenda item that you wrote on and it's the, the bottom dollar amount of-
Are, are you referring to the, the ballot item for the referendum?
Yes.
No. No, it's, it's a, it's a scripted question that we get from statute. It does not include that.
So that did-
It was, it was the, to approve the, um, school budget, as approved by the council on May seventeenth, whatever it was.
And that's the language that, as approved by the council, where we, that's the language that was in that motion?
To answer Councilor Grindel's question though,
I'll try to find it.
The, the motion that the board, and again, I, I'm glad that you brought it up, Councilor Hamilton, because that was the discussion, in fact, um, going back to Mr. Williams. That's the discussion that we've had every year when that council order is passed in the budget, is that if there is additional money, even though the school board has the ultimate authority, it would be to do it in good faith. And I would say to you, your memory is very good, Mr. Williams, it did happen forty years ago and that same process happened here. But if you look at the motion that the school board approved, it's to approve the disposition of additional subsidy with a recommendation for council support. So the council could say, we don't support it. Again, I don't want to speak on behalf of the school board, but I think our school board members, we're doing this in good faith. Completely good faith, and to, to go to what Mr. Williams said, um, the intent is increasing it by a small portion to cover two items that were really needed and to provide tax relief to the voters and the citizens. And I'm one of them too, okay, um, just not all in one year. That, that's the essence of this piece. So if it's a motion, Councilor Grindel, it would be to, to express support or to not to express support. And I think that would put it back in the hands of the school board to decide if they want to go back and maybe put more into, um, reduction this year and maybe a smaller reserve. Again, I can't make that decision on behalf of the board, but I'm looking at our finance committee.
That's correct, yeah.
I think the recommendation that's coming from the school board is to use of the just under $700,000, 570,000 of it to go towards tax reduction.
Council Caplin.
So the voters approved a set amount of 22 million and change.
Right.
But now we have available closer to 23 million. With, with the additional school funding from the state, if we, if we don't put this back towards the taxpayers, is, does that make the school amount that's collected this year closer to 23 million? It's just more is coming from the state, which, in essence, we're all still paying for it. But the voters approved 22 million and change. Right?
Voters approved an initial budget, Council Kaplan, of 23,680,000. With the changes that we're talking about, and must be put on board by the school, the increase would make it 23,808,000. Okay? I think the difference that we're looking at would be a local assessment of the budget that was approved by the voters on June 8th. The local assessment, under what the school board is recommending, would be 11, under what was passed, 11,566,905,75. What the school board voted on, is asking for support on, would reduce that by 200,000 dollars this year. And to what's collected, I think that's more a question of what is the tax rate going to be set at? Under this proposal, that other 369,000 would be used in subsequent years, to keep that tax burden stable. And again, I would also remind you, if you look back at the history since Ellsworth withdrew from RSU 24 back in 2014, it was one year, 2016, I believe, was where the council approved a significant local tax increase because of subsidy issues back then. If you take a look at the local assessment, it has maintained relatively stable for the past five years. In one year, it's been 3 percent. All of the other years, it's been less than 3 percent. And in three of the years, there's been a reduction, less than a half a percent, and less than a half a percent increase. So I think the school department is being very responsible. You know, we talk about the pandemic, and people going through a very difficult time. Last year in the pandemic, before we even came to the council, the school board made a decision to go with a budget that had no increase to local taxes on citizens. This year, the budget that we brought forth, recognizing it was still limits of a pandemic, the one that was approved by voters, had an increase of 6,300 dollars spread across all the taxpayers of Ellsworth. I, I think the record of the school department shows that we're trying to bring forth budgets that adequately and appropriately fund public education, that are not a financial burden
And if I may add to what Dan just said, the school board has been very mindful over the, since we withdrew from the RSU, and I've been on the board that entire time, of trying to maintain a local contribution level that is, that is consistently low. So we don't have increases from year to year that are very significant. And Dan talked about that one year, 2016, where it was pretty significant. But we're always mindful that something's going to come up that's going to cause a bigger increase than we'd like to see in subsequent years. So the question, why, why not give more back to the citizens this year, and instead hold some of it in a tax stabilization fund? The reason that that idea came about, and it was in discussion with our business manager, Carolyn Helen Heller, and the finance committee, and Dan, is that we wanted to be able to, we'd have no idea what's coming down the road at us next year, but we wanted to be able to, if there was going to be an increase next year, keep it, you know, at a level that's, that's, that would be acceptable to most people. Like, you know, we've done, Dan's mentioned the 0 percent increase, we've had half a percent, you know, 1 percent. We want to keep it somewhere in that range, but we don't know what may happen next year with state subsidy, and, and also other things that happen internally with, because we are experiencing quite a bit of growth in our school department. So it's not any kind of, it's, we came up with this good faith plan to return it to the taxpayers, but not all at once. So that, and we, and tonight, we're just asking for your support for this. If you're willing to give it, we'd be grateful. If not, we can go back and discuss what we might do differently or, or not. But the, the idea is that we, we did feel that this money belonged to the citizens of Ellsworth, and we wanted to find a responsible way to return it to them. And without, you know, setting us up for next year, where we may have to ask for more from them, this way we could offset that need. I hope that made sense.
Paul, using that analogy, you, you seem to be creating an atmosphere of fear. We don't know what's coming up down the road. No, none of us do. The city doesn't know what's coming up down the road. But using your analogy, we should be upping the tax rate a little bit, just to have a bigger cushion. No, we aren't doing that. You guys are creating a bigger cushion for yourself by not returning that money this year. That is the taxpayers' money that was given to the taxpayers. It wasn't given to the school to, you know, sock away someplace and allegedly give it back to the taxpayer in, in little bits and pieces.
Well, we're not talking about little bits and pieces, but I mean, this amount of money is, it is not a huge amount of money, right? It's not, the impact that it's going to have on.
697,000 is not a huge amount of money?
Not, I'm not, I'm thinking about it, I'm thinking about it, on the, on the impact it would have on an individual homeowner, let's say, like a 150,000 or 200,000 dollar home. I don't know what that impact would be, but it's.
An impact is an impact.
But as I said, it's not a big impact.
I'm, I'm getting the, the impression tonight that there is real estate math, there is banker's math, there is superintendent's math, and none of it has anything to do with the math that I learned in Ellsworth schools. It, it's, it's inconceivable that the first and only decision of the school board would not be to send it back to the taxpayers. It isn't the school board's money. It's the taxpayers' money. It's, it's as simple as that. Whatever comes up next year, the year after, or the year after that, well, the boards will deal with it then.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I'm not going to, to live in fear of higher expenses and, and tell people, yeah, well, we're going to hold on to your money, just in case. I, I can't do that.
Well, we're not, we're not recommending this because out of fear, we're just recommending it out of prudence. And to try to keep the local contribution stable, as opposed to, you know, going up and going down too much, we just keep it stable. That was the idea. And, you know, you can, I understand that you disagree with it, but it's not, it was done with, with the best of intentions, and not, it wasn't superintendent's math or some other kind of math. It was just, it was pretty simple and basic and, and transparent. And we, by putting it into a fund that's, a tax stabilization fund, it's earmarked for return to taxpayers, yeah, we could have done it differently, and maybe we'll go back and reconsider how we do it. I'm not sure how that conversation will go, but we, we thought this was a responsible way to do it. And so we're just, I just want to be clear about that, and, you know, we came to you tonight just asking for, we didn't have to come here tonight, but we came here tonight to ask for your approval of what we're recommending.
Council Kaplan.
Well, I understand the need for the boiler system, and this has been a topic of discussion over the year. I can certainly accept that without, without a doubt, because you don't have heat, you can't have students. But at the same time, when the state's giving us back more of the reimbursement, they are giving us back our own money. We've already paid the taxes into the federal government, that turned around and gave it back to the state, who's now turning around and giving it back to the property owner. And looking at what is coming down the pike, or at least the talk from both federal and state, is increased state taxes, increased federal taxes, increased gas taxes, increased, you know, which ultimately, we've never seen no increase in, in the, in the budgets. I, I just think that, you know, we should have a gimme one year, you know, just, just one year, where we're not looking at these, these ever-increasing budgets. I mean, a budget starts at whatever it was last year, and you add on to it, because you automatically have your, your payroll increases that are guaranteed by contracts, and then you have your increase in premiums of the health insurance, and then you have the increase in the cafeteria plans, and it's just always going up and up and up and up. When does the taxpayer get a break? When? Do you have an answer for me? When?
Well, my answer would be this, and again, I want to also respond to Council Blanchett, with all due respect, what's being presented by the school board tonight is not superintendent math or any other type of math. It's completely transparent, it's clear-cut and straightforward with what the board is proposing, okay? And it's a philosophical difference. It's not an attempt to use superintendent math. And Council Kaplan, I think the piece is this, giving back 200,000 this year, and looking at giving back 369,000 over the next couple of years, is the way that the school board is recommending that it be done. But I would echo what Mr. Markosian said. If, if the council does not want to support that, then we would go back to the board and have another conversation.
And I would, I would just say, from the perspective in terms of, you're right, you didn't have to come back here. We, we agreed on it, and I would hope that we would continue to have the kind of productive relationship that we don't turn this into, we've talked about this many times, city-side versus school. That is not a, a great direction to head as a city, because all that will do is ultimately, it's, the city side, the council makes the decisions ultimately about the budget. If this council wants to reject any budget that's put forward, it gets rejected. And that's not a, that's not a place that I would want us to get to. So having the opportunity to work collaboratively around these types of issues, recognizing that we, we don't have to be on the same page, we can disagree. But it is, it is about collaborating and making sure that there's good-faced effort to do that. So I, I appreciate the fact that you did come back to the council, as you stated, because that's important. And reality is, is that if that didn't happen, and if it wasn't transparent, then this time next year would look very different in terms of, when the budget was proposed, from my perspective, I'm only speaking for myself, in terms of what I would support, and I would look at the amount, and I would say, reduce your budget by 679,000, period. So that the fact that you're here and listening, I don't know if the council wants to take a, kind of a, a vote, or just leave it at the discussion to let the school board know. I'll leave it up to your decision, collective decision, if you want to formally vote, or if you just want to leave it at the, what we've shared collectively, we can do that. Is there any desire to vote? No? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, yes, there is a desire. I would make a motion that we not support the school board's plan as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion fails. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've been at this for a while. Does anyone want to take a quick break?
No.
No? Keep, keep moving?
Soldier through.
Soldier through.
They're going to work in the morning.
Item 24, Council Order number 082113, presentation, discussion, and possible action on entering into a zero-payment lease agreement for two Hyundai electric, electric vehicles.
So I think we can make this fairly brief. The opportunity was presented, as I listed here in the memo, for Row Ford, they reached out and advised me of this, this program through Efficiency Main, where municipalities can apply for and obtain essentially what's grant funding through Efficiency Main to offset the cost of a lease for electric vehicles. And I kind of looked at it as kind of a unique opportunity for the city to explore what is probably, you know, in our future, as far as the future of fleet vehicles. I know several of you on this, on this council have experienced, personal experience with electric vehicles. I personally do not. And I just felt that this was something I wanted to bring before the council. I didn't want to miss out on the opportunity to take advantage of the program if the council had any interest in doing so. And the details are basically, it's a 36-month lease on a Hyundai, the name of the vehicle is IONIQ. Car, right? It's fully electric, and there's zero payments, zero cost for the vehicle on the part of the city. Now, obviously, there's insurance costs, and there's registration costs, so it's not, doesn't come without costs. But as far as for the vehicle itself, it's a zero cost, zero charge.
Council Kaplan.
These are rebates. It's enhanced rebates, is what it says. So we do have to pay something upfront. And then, as with all rebates, there's conditions, so what's the catch?
Well, the rebate is through Efficiency Main, so we don't pay anything upfront. Efficiency Main essentially pays for the difference between the dealer rebates and what we would, what we would have to pay for the vehicle. So it's, there's zero payments made by the city.
The Efficiency Main rebate is done in the showroom.
Yeah.
And the 36 months, we just give it back?
Yeah.
Three years.
Yeah.
It's free. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just having a hard time understanding. So they, the rebate is done at the showroom?
Correct.
And we need these vehicles for, what are we using them for?
So we don't have to get vehicles, we can get one. You can only, you can get a maximum of two, which is why I put one or two in the memo. And the options for using the vehicles, one would be mostly internal options, so code enforcement, there's two. They can go in separate directions if they had access to multiple vehicles. As, as Council Alliance pointed out earlier, Jason frequently has to go out and travel to do work on traffic lights and other things. He currently uses his own personal vehicle for that. We have members of all throughout the city that travel all across the state for different trainings and seminars and those type of things, and currently use POVs, or in some instances, we rent vehicles. So there's a whole host of different opportunities where the vehicles could be useful. And in many of those cases, where we have people traveling for work purposes in their own POV, there's, you know, there's some, some liability issues involved in that, which could be potentially eliminated by the use of a, of a city-owned vehicle under this type of circumstance. In addition, almost every single, I think every single department within the city has travel expenses built into their budget. And so the exploration or the addition of these type of vehicles in the future for city employee use could reduce those line items in individual budgets, and be placed perhaps in one specific budget for fleet vehicles.
I, the only, my request, I, I mean, I think there'll be some costs, some minimal costs, but I think there'll be much more savings in terms of reducing what we pay for those vehicles and the, and the cost of it. And I, I would, the only thing I would ask is that there would be a clear policy that would mandate the use of those vehicles, that when they're available, they, and somebody needs it, that they use those vehicles. Why not explore this where there is that really no cost, and, and clearly, there's going to be savings for the city? So why not take advantage of whatever that savings is? Why not pursue it?
Could use them for police bruises instead of the 150s and the...
Then the battery goes down.
They can only sneak up on you, but they'll never catch you.
And I think, you know, but I think, I know... And I think, you know, but I think, I know Bangor has a couple that they're using for a variety of different things, some within the police department, not for frontline vehicles. But I think, again, this is, it's a learning opportunity for the city. I think it's, I think it's the, what we're going to be going to in the future to some degree, and I think this is a low-cost way for us to get an education and explore what, you know, what these vehicles can offer.
Counselor Kaplan.
And while I think that's great, I'm still never going to be on board with the electric cars as long as the batteries are made with cobalt, which we all know is mined in the Democratic Republic of Congo using slave labor. And I'm never-
Yeah. You can try one tonight if you'd like.
No, thank you. It has, it has a slave battery. I'm sorry. I will never participate in something that engages in slave labor, child labor, and takes advantage of the poorest population on the planet. I can't do it.
Counselor Lyons.
Because with the Hyundai company, now, there are some cars that come with guaranteed not that kind of-
Oh, you can look at the documentaries about the sourcing of cobalt. It's basically trying to source the sand.
Right. But they're-
It's not, no. And the average person in the Democratic Republic of Congo makes 73 cents a day, and these are kids, nine, 10 years old. Nine, 10 years old, and they're working 12-hour days so that we can have our electric batteries? I'm sorry, I just, I can't get on board with that.
Counselor Blinchette.
The one expense that we will have to have, as far as I can see, is a charger.
They can use yours.
Depending on which model you get, the Hyundai IONIQ, it's either good for 124 or 170 miles per charge. Charging time on a Level 2 charger, which is what we have on Franklin Street, is four hours.
Yeah. My thought process is initially, we would use the Franklin Street at night, when it's not likely to be being used by citizens, and we're also getting some up in Norton Park. So we'll have multiple options without actually installing a charging station here in City Hall.
The only caveat to that, those chargers start getting used around 6:15, 6:30 in the morning on Franklin Street. So if we leave them there all night, they wouldn't-
Yeah, no, as part of the policy, we could have the law enforcement, police are here all night, they can go over and remove it from the charger and bring it back to City Hall.
Gotcha.
Who uses them at 6:15?
I thought he got up earlier than that, but-
Mark.
I'm not the only one, trust me.
I've only ever saw Yaprius there, that's the only vehicle I've seen there, but I haven't gone by lately, so.
Other comments before Mark gets a headline.
I just encourage people to look at the sourcing of the cobalt that makes these batteries, and it's a crime to see modern-day slavery, people beaten because they don't produce enough. It's not right.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the city manager to complete all the necessary paperwork to enter into a $0 payment, 36-month lease agreement with Row Ford of Westbrook, Maine for up to two Hyundai IONIQ electric vehicles.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? One opposition. Item 25, public hearing and action on amendments to the City of Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter 4, Fire Protection and Prevention Ordinance.
Members of council, Mr. Chairman, in your packets, I believe you received the revisions based on your recommendations from the last council meeting. Also, you should have attached the information that Ms. Grindel asked for, and you should also have a memo from me related to those changes. All those changes that were made were directly from what your inputs were, in an effort to keep things short, since we've been here for a while. Do you have any questions?
Seeing no questions, is there any action? Oh, I'll look here. Thank you. This is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Any comments?
Looks like we're going to have to hire some public.
They're all in bed.
They could be, I'm just checking. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the revisions as written to the Ellsworth City Ordinance, Chapter 4, Fire Protection and Prevention Ordinance, Article 7, Section 7.5 and 7.5.4.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passes. Two opposi, two opposed.
Thank you for your due diligence in getting that done, both of you.
That's a good compromise.
Anyone else that might have been working, I didn't see the last two devils here, so.
Item 26, executive session to discuss labor negotiations between the City of Ellsworth and Ellsworth Firefighters Association's Local 3402 International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO-CLC, in accordance with MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Section 405, Paragraph 6D.
Thanks, Jay.
Make a motion, we move to executive session.
Second.
For, all in favor?
Thank you.
We'll go to executive session, we will be coming back to report out.
Is this not the line that we're at?
And that's the problem, because, you know, it's always-
We are back in session.
You're not the one paying for it.
Counselors?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the tentative agreement between the City of Ellsworth and the Ellsworth Firefighters Association, Local 3402 International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO-CLC.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Just note that we're just going on verbal, we haven't actually seen it. I don't have anything to see, though.
We'll take everybody's word on it.
Well, I trust Mark.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? We're adjourned.
That's a late meeting.